Okay Chairman, we are ready to go.
Thank you Dr. Johnson Smith. Good morning ladies and gentlemen and welcome to the July 9th, 2020 State Board of Education Meeting. I'm Eric Davis Chair of the Board and I call this meeting to order. And welcome all my colleagues, advisors, staff, visitors, online listeners and Twitter followers. And I remind our audience and those listening that this party meets monthly with its official meeting typically scheduled for the first Thursday of the month. Due to COVID-19, the Board's work was split over two days to provide time for the needed discussions from each respective committee. Today, we will conclude with our two remaining committees, Educator Standards in Practice and Business Operations. I remind our visitors and online listeners that you can follow the meeting online, see all of our materials by going to SBE Meetings at stateboard.ncpublicschools.gov. Board members, you're reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this Board. Any member of the Board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record. And if during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. I do ask all of those listening if you would mute your mics until time for you to speak. That will help all of us better engage in this meeting. So please mute your mics. Thank you. We now come to our special recognitions, the time on our agenda when we recognize those educators, schools, local school systems, or advisors for outstanding achievement and honors. And today, we recognize our students who were North Carolina's 2020 United States Senate Youth Scholarship winners from Cary and Charlotte respectively. This is a highly competitive merit-based program and winners receive scholarships with the encouragement to pursue studies in government, history and public affairs. Doctors Angie Mullenex and Lori Carlin will now provide a brief update and we'll hear briefly from the students who received these prestigious scholarships. Doctors Mullenex and Carlin.
Good morning Chairman Davis, Vice Chairman Duncan, Superintendent Johnson and members of the Board. My name is Angie Mullenex and I'm the Director of K-12 Academics and Innovation Strategy. And presenting with me today is Dr. Lori Carlin, Section Chief for Social Studies and Arts Education. As you mentioned this morning, we are pleased to present to you a prestigious recognition, North Carolina's 2020 United States Senate Youth Scholarship winners. This recognition process was spearheaded by Michelle McLaughlin, K-12 Social Studies Consultant, and we especially thank her for her diligence and organization during this extensive process. The United States Senate Youth Program was established by Senate Resolution in 1962. The purpose was to increase young Americans' understanding of the interrelationship of the three branches of government, the caliber and responsibilities of federally elected and appointed officials, and the vital importance of democratic decision-making not only for America but for people around the world. The United States Senate Youth Program is merit-based and highly competitive. Each year, this program brings together two high school juniors and seniors from every state, the District of Columbia and the Department of Defense Education Activity, to meet in Washington DC for an extensive week-long study of the federal government and its leaders. Each state's Department of Education selects the two winning students through a rigorous selection process. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lori Carlin, who will provide an overview of that extensive process and the winners who have received the award recognition. Dr. Carlin?
Thank you Dr. Mullenex. This past school year, we are pleased to announce William Harris of Charlotte and Rebecca Siegel of Cary were selected from among the state's top student leaders to be part of the 104 nationally recognized students who represent their states and who will also each receive a $10,000 undergraduate college scholarship with encouragement for undergraduate coursework in history, government and public affairs. Due to COVID-19 and the need to ensure the safety and health of the student delegates, government officials, military officers and all other program participants, the 2020 Senate Youth Washington Week program was canceled. However, our winners William and Rebecca did not complain. They both emailed our office to thank our team and the agency for the opportunity and the experiences this election process exposed them to. Although they did not get the opportunity to experience Washington Week, they concentrated on completing their high school academic careers and finding ways to help their communities during the pandemic. Our first recipient, William Harris, is the son of proud parents Sherry and Richard Harris Thor. William is an outstanding 2020 graduate of Charlotte Country Day School. After serving on the Student Senate throughout his high school career, William served his senior year as the Chairperson of the school's Honor Council. As the son of two teachers, William deeply values education and is a former president of his school's Model United Nations Club. He also served as an at-large Senator on his school's Student Senate. William is the co-founder of Naturalize Charlotte, an effort to increase naturalization among residents eligible for citizenship. To create and launch Naturalize Charlotte, William and his brother worked closely with leaders in the local government of Charlotte and the executive directors of several Charlotte nonprofits. Although the pandemic of 2020 did not allow William and the other 103 youth delegates from across the nation to participate in the traditional Week in Washington, he feels the Senate Youth Opportunity is a great experience for those who seek to support the desire to impact positive change for all who live in today's global society. In the fall, William will begin his post-secondary studies as a freshman attending Havreford College in Pennsylvania. William plans to study philosophy and political science with a concentration in peace, justice and human rights. Chairman Davis and members of the North Carolina State Board of Education, State Superintendent Mark Johnson and the K-12 Social Studies Section presents Mr. William Stewart Harris, North Carolina winner of the 2020 United States Senate Youth Scholarship. Take it away William.
Good morning everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be recognized here this morning. It is definitely a tremendous honor to represent our state as a delegate in the United States Senate Youth Program. I really enjoyed the application process, especially being able to visit Raleigh and interview in person. And I want to especially thank Ms. McLaughlin for all she does to make the program possible. The college scholarship associated with the program is also something that I am tremendously grateful for and I deeply appreciate everything that you all do to sponsor the United States Senate Youth Program. So thank you all so much.
Thank you William. Our next winner, Rebecca Siegel, is an outstanding 2020 graduate of Cary Academy in Cary, North Carolina. Rebecca is the daughter of proud parents Ann Eager and Alan Siegel. Since her freshman year of high school, Rebecca has been involved in leadership and youth activism. She represented North Carolina at Girls Nation as a Senator and was actively involved in her school's social justice and inclusion initiatives. Rebecca performed a great deal of service through her work as captain of her school's speech and debate team and through her work with the Triangle Debate League. During her high school years, Rebecca dedicated a tremendous amount of time mentoring elementary students through a program called Books and Basketball. Although the pandemic of 2020 did not allow her and the other 103 youth delegates from across the nation to participate in the Washington Week, Rebecca feels the Senate Youth Program helps students learn the fundamentals of how government works in a way that changes lives. Rebecca shared that she believes the Senate Youth Program helps those who are honored to participate to become more informed citizens and the informed policy leaders they hope to become. In the fall, Rebecca will be a freshman attending the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill as a Morehead-Kane Scholar where she plans to study public policy and Spanish. Chairman Davis and members of the North Carolina State Board of Education, State Superintendent Mark Johnson and the K-12 Social Studies Section presents Ms. Rebecca Siegel, North Carolina winner of the 2020 United States Senate Youth Scholarship. Take it away Rebecca.
Good morning everyone. Thank you again so much for having us here. Like William said throughout this entire process, we felt so incredibly supported by the entire Department of Education. And although Washington Week didn't look like what we expected it to be, we were still able to meet with the 103 other delegates as well as representatives from all different level of our government. And being introduced to that community who was so quick to band together when we were uncertain about what Washington Week would look like was truly indicative of what the United States Senate Youth Program is about. Thank you all so much for selecting me to be a part of this unique community and it's something that I look forward to being a part of for the rest of my life. This experience has been truly unique. Thank you all again.
Thank you Rebecca. We are so grateful to be a part of this opportunity and thanks to all those who served on the panels to select these outstanding individuals. We all look forward to seeing the accomplishments of William and Rebecca as they continue their studies. Thank you Chairman Davis and Board Members.
Well, thank you Doctors Mullenex and Carlin and on behalf of the Board to Ms. Siegel and Mr. Harris, we extend our congratulations for your accomplishments thus far including the selection of United States Senate Youth Scholarship winners. And even more, we congratulate you on your interest in public service and government affairs. Similarly, the Board values the contributions of our advisors and today, we have the distinct pleasure of welcoming a new advisor to the Board, Dr. Tony Jackson, Superintendent of Vance County Schools. We're delighted to have you, Dr. Jackson, at the table with us. We respect and honor the incredible work that you are doing in Vance County and the influence you have over our entire state. And I'd like to offer you an opportunity to make comments to the Board at this time. Dr. Jackson?
Good morning Chairman and members of the State Board. It's an honor and a privilege to represent the voices of superintendents from across the state. And I would say that these are consequential times and are up to the challenge and hopefully our voices will help set the stage for you to see the work through our lenses at times when you need to. And so I look forward to serving and thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you Dr. Jackson. We look forward to working together with you in the days ahead. At this time, I'll call on Mr. McKinney for our legislative update. Mr. McKinney?
Good morning Chairman Davis, Vice Chairman Duncan, Superintendent Johnson, Board Members, Advisors, my colleagues at DPI and Board Staff, as well as those listening across the Shire we call North Carolina. I thank you for the opportunity to present today and for the privilege to represent you and to serve our students, their families and our communities. I ended yesterday texting many of my friends a simple code. As a world history teacher and IB philosophy teacher, I would start each day with a quote. Sometimes it was for motivation, others for inspiration, even some for reflection. You see, I love quotes. They are written words from our forefathers and mothers that carry insight and vision and maybe a reminder. And it lets us know that we are not alone, that others have walked our paths and have lived to share their perspective. And it was not lost on us that yesterday our students faced fearful odds like brave Horatius and shared their perspectives on their education and their academic opportunities. It was not lost on us that we made history as a state school board introducing a new resolution pledging our commitment to educational equity. And it is not lost on us that today you vote on a decision that looks at how we interpret history and thus teach it, again, through shared perspective. And so as we begin this day like every other and those to come, I begin with those text words, those of Bushido and the Samurai's Creed. And they are simply, "We live to fight another day." Figuratively and literally, in the time of COVID, for our students and our schools, our communities and our state and for our cause, North Carolina Public Schools. I'd like to begin today with the North Carolina General Assembly update and first look at the next session date. And they convened on, and I'm sorry that says Wednesday, they actually convened on Tuesday until Saturday, July 11th. And then we'll stand in recess to Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020. As you can see here, these will be the matters that will be considered. And then when the Senate and the House of Representatives adjourn on that Thursday, December 2020, they will stand adjourned. I placed a link at the bottom of this slide for the North Carolina General Assembly Legislative Calendar and will absolutely keep you updated if there are any changes in the status of when they will re-adjourn. I do want to give a quick thank you to the General Assembly Representatives and Senators, particularly those of the Ed House Select Committee Chairs. In this picture, you will see Representative Ashton Clemmons, Representative Craig Horn and Representative John Fraley. They have been instrumental in working with the State Board and leadership as we've moved forward through a plethora of bills that we're going to cover today. I just wanted to say thank you to these particular representatives and their hard work and collaboration. We'll start today by revisiting the joint priorities that we've been working through over these last few months. And if we could go to the next slide, I wanted to briefly highlight how those priorities have been funded. So if you look first at sustaining child nutrition programs and supplemental pay for essential employees, thank you so much to the hard work of Dr. Lynn Harvey and Janet Johnson of Child Nutrition Services. Their collaboration and collective effort along with their staff has been instrumental in literally North Carolina leading the country in our dedication and commitment to child nutrition and serving our students through this pandemic. Seventy-five million was provided to DPI for Nutrition Services in 1043. And that appropriation has now been expanded to include innovative school meals and to modify that use to 1230 in House Bill 1032, which gives our districts a lot more flexibility as to how and when they can use those funds, particularly as stated in the next bullet, with a $12 million transportation allotment. Now, this is being withheld in case we need that for further expenses related to school nutrition and summer delivery of those meals. This was also updated in 1023. In 1023, there was also a provision to allot 3.9 million to cover the cost of reduced-priced lunches. And if there is any left over, also to reduce-priced breakfast. So that's been a huge ask of the Board and DPI staff over the last few years. So that was great to see there and could really help as we're moving forward to alleviate some of that extra costs and burden on many of our students and their families. Moving down to the next bullet, Student Support Staff and Services for the physical and mental wellbeing of our students. 1043 allocated 10 million to this. The continued services of our exceptional children, 15 million was allocated through 1043 and we just was allocated an extra 5 million here. We also today will be discussing the CARES Act funding and one of the possible allocations will be an additional 10 million to our exceptional children there as well. Resources for digital remote teaching and learning from both House Bill 1043, which was in all total there, 75.998 million. There's also possible allocations from the CARES Act that will be reviewed today for an added 25.27. So bringing that total up to our commitment to providing digital remote teaching and learning resources to almost 100 million. And then the Jump Start Summer Bridge Program at 70 million through House Bill 1043. It was exciting to hear this morning in our morning communications call that Clay County has actually begun their Jump Start Program and Buncombe County will begin their program July 15th. And so I will be, I'm looking forward to presenting next time and highlighting some of the programs across the state that will have already started by the time we re-adjourn in August. Some added and additional priorities from both the Board and DPI and reentry and reopening. I think the largest one right now is personal protective equipment, which 7 million was allocated in House Bill 1023. There's a great number of individuals across the state right now that are working both to identify what the needs will be and a cost analysis, but also working with the legislature to see when the next round of possible appropriations for that will be. We know we're really going to need that and considering Plan A and Plan B options for reopening and reentry. Also looking at Leandro Action Plan items, there are two bills right now that address specifically very comprehensive bills for Leandro action items. District and school transformation, regional support, which will also be highlighted in the CARES Act 10% presentation. K-8 package digital curricula again in that CARES Act, funding for PSU partnerships. And then School Business System Modernization Plan, an 18 million in non-recurring funds was allocated in House Bill 1023. And then also the continued partnership with UNCTV at-home learning. I did want to continue to put these resources on this presentation for 1043. We've gone over that multiple times. And then also again, highlight 1023, which again works specifically looking at each one of the subdivisions and sections. And I've gone over a couple of those very important ones already, but these are just for your references if you need a quick guide. This spells it out a little bit more in detail and provides a link to the actual bill in summary. 704, we have also gone over several times, but I wanted to include that again in the list of resources for your quick use. Senate Bill 113 is new. It was signed into effect last week. What this does, it has basically 10 parts that are affecting education. There is a school psychologist licensure exemption. Part 2 clarifies the use of digital learning funds. Part 3 were modifications to 2021 school calendar. Just a side note here, there was a Senate Bill 374 that was looking to provide further clarity on the five remote days used prior to August 24th. That bill was passed unanimously by the House and has been sent to Senate Rules. So that is still in process. Part 4 modifies the use of school nutrition funds. Part 5 works with LME, MCO and expenditures for student behavioral needs. Part 6 changes the charter school report date from February to June. Part 7 is the superintendent may approve bonds to finance or refinance charter school facilities. Part 8 revises school administrator intern stipends. Part 9 extends maximum grant terms to six years for North Carolina transforming principal programs. And Part 10 provides COVID-19 immunity for non-public schools. So the next few slides also provide a more in-depth overview of this bill for your use and moving forward. 681 is also a bill that was recently signed. It has six sections that pertain to North Carolina public education, particularly eliminating reports to superintendent and adopted schedule of fees, authorizing the North Carolina CTE Education Foundation to administer grants, broader charter school enrollment priorities, expanding the Schools That Lead pilot program. This is a very important one. It now has an arts education requirement and also really spells out advanced teaching roles changes. Senate Bill 681 is basically a resurrected mini bill from House Bill 966. So a lot of this has already been seen and those who this would affect at the DPIs with DPI staff knew about a lot of these changes. Some of them are new, but again, these were coming from House Bill 966. 818 has been signed for some time. It is the compensation of certain school employees. So this provides an overview of what that now states. You go to the next slide, the School-Based Mental Health Bill, Senate Bill 476 has also been signed for a while. Again, though, I want to make sure that this is a library for you if you ever need to come back and review a bill, get a quick summary of it and then have a hyperlink to it. This is a slide we've used again to look at some of the themes that continue to be priorities of short session education-related bills. We're continuing to follow some of these that have not been ratified and presented to the Governor. And these update our North Carolina State Board of Education funding requests. Again, a lot of these you will see also align with Leandro. The next few slides will present all of the bills that I just went through, but also those that have become Senate Bill, excuse me, that have become session laws that may not just have as much information that we need to cover in a 15-minute legislative update, but again, for your information here. If we could go to the Lighting Our Way slide, please. I wanted to make sure that this was included. This is the Guidebook for Reopening Public Schools. This was approved at the last State Board meeting and is not only the summary here, but also the full press release. So again, as you're working with your regions, if you ever need to highlight that and figure out where to find it, it will be included in this. And then the next few slides continue to highlight the working groups and their work, the school's reopening framework, and then also a resource that has been widely raised across the state, which is the Communications Working Group led by Jessica Swinski and the COVID-19 Weekly Top 10. This is a running list, so if you click on this link in every month's legislative update, it will provide that every single one of these top 10s from the most recent to the past one. So it's a great resource if you ever need specifically what the communications group has been highlighting as the top 10 issues and resources from around the state. The last few slides are informational slides again with the calendars and with the three-phase reopening plan 2 graphics that if you ever have to do a presentation are great slides to use that highlight information on that. I'd like to quickly move to the state of the Shire. And first, I would like to congratulate our Board Advisor, my good friend and colleague, the 2019 North Carolina Teacher of the Year, Mariah Morris, and congratulate her on an incredible year of service. I know that she would have never imagined and dreamed that this year would have been filled with such incredible obstacles. And man, she has with grace, with triumph, transcended all of those and really led our profession in our state in a multitude of ways. Here you'll see her pictured with the Computer Science Initiative and our Regional Teacher of the Year jump with the Golden Knights. And then I couldn't praise her more for how she's really built this next team that's coming up and shared how well she led her Regional Teachers of the Year in a multitude of ways and has built out a model and a framework for how the North Carolina Teacher of the Year cohorts can really lead our profession and be impactful across our state. But thank you Mariah. And again, I can't overstate how honored I am to be one of your colleagues. The 2020 North Carolina Teacher of the Year announcement will happen tomorrow. The event begins at 1:00. The announcement should be around 1:45. And here are our finalists for the 2020 awards. So I cannot wait to see the next person who will be able to follow in Mariah's footsteps as the State Teacher of the Year. And already, these regional teachers, I've had some minimal interaction with them and they just continue to amaze me. Wanted to highlight very briefly a West Craven High School visit with Representative Horn and I put TOI, I'm sorry Tabari, look at that. I apologize sir. P-O-Y, Tabari Wallace. And what you want to see here is the six-foot stiff. His staff was great in administration and providing Um, his staff was great in administration and providing us all with sticks so that we could really get a feel of what it felt like to look at six-foot social distancing as we walked around a school. Uh, and you can just kind of glide through these next slides just to give some visuals of what that might look like. Their hallways were already set up. If we could stop at that picture right there, uh, with the desk in the middle, I think that's probably the most revealing slide to show what six feet faced out with the desks would look like. Um, and it was, it was very enlightening to see that in a classroom where you get about nine to 10 desks and making sure you follow that requirement. We walked through other different types of classrooms, whether it be lab tables on the next slide or computer labs to see what that six foot looked like. Tabari's staff had done an incredible job of setting up a lot of different models for different style classrooms. Uh, and I did want to thank Representative Horn for, um, for driving almost, uh, three and a half, four hours, uh, to, to be, to meet, um, Tabari and I out of West Craven High School to really get a grass, a grassroots and, and, um, sense of what it would look like to follow through with these. So thank you there and thank you, uh, Advisor of Principal of the Year, Tabari Wallace, for hosting us. Several great, uh, events have transpired over the last few weeks since we last met. Creed NC and the Freedom Hill Coalition had their virtual public convening. It was, uh, very impactful, uh, and, uh, hopefully will continue the, uh, the commitment on the I Stand on Freedom Hill located on the left. There is an upcoming, uh, and, and thank you, uh, Board Member James Ford for your leadership with this. Uh, it, uh, again, an incredibly impactful event. The North Carolina Conference for Edu- Educational Equity will be held July 21st and 22nd. The, uh, Board Director, Dr. Townsend Smith, and I will present at this conference on the strategic plan, uh, and the, um, and the work that this group and, and the board has done for educational equity. Several of our advisors have, uh, spent, um, their time on the INCASA planning webinar series, this one particularly remote instruction plans. And I've, I've heard incredible feedback from Tabari Wallace and, and Mariah Morris's presentations here. A lot of our great colleagues, DPIs, uh, own Dr. Vanessa Warren and several superintendents and also in INCASA's Catherine Joyce, who's been, uh, an incredible partner through, uh, our transcendence of COVID-19 and its effect on North Carolina public education. There will also be in September, which is the, the, one of the first ones that I've seen that is still being considered to be face-to-face, the NC STRIDE, which is the North Carolina Strategic Teacher Recruitment with Intentionality Diversity and Excellence Conference. Uh, and this will be focusing on teacher recruitment in North Carolina, particularly teachers of color. The last few resources are again, just ones that I always want you all to have, the Remote Learning Initiative and the UNC TV At Home Initiative, just two tremendous resources for our teachers across this state. Uh, and I, again, I'm honored to serve you all and be, uh, at this point, if there are any questions, I, I will be happy to answer. I know I'm probably over my time, so if you would like to put them in the chat or email me, I will make sure to follow up with each one of you on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Any questions for my colleagues?
Uh, Chair Davis, this is Olivia. I know, uh, I, you know, with respect of before time, I do have a very quick question to ask.
Ms. Oxendine.
Absolutely. Um, thank you so much. That was such a, I mean, an eye-opening, um, presentation, Mr. McKinney. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions about the bill that contains a component for the licensing of school psychologists. And, um, we did some work around that piece a couple of, maybe about a year ago, the state board, um, revised some policies around using a national credential to open up the pipeline of school psychologists in North Carolina. Is that component of that bill, what, what must the board or Pepsi do to unpack that? Or do you have any idea?
Yeah, that's a great question. And actually, uh, we are convening, uh, it looks like Wednesday of next week. Sherry Thomas, Matt Hoskins, um, and, and looking over what 113 specifically in part one with school psychologist licensure exemption, what that exactly means. And also there was a clause that did not make it to the, uh, final ratified bill that looked at a pilot program for school psychologists, uh, and that has been something that has been continuously discussed. So we're actually meeting on Wednesday, so if you would like, I would gladly send you an invitation to that meeting, uh, because that is specifically geared to part one of, of Senate 113 and that education omnibus. Does that sound good, Dr.?
Sounds really good. I, I would appreciate, um, listening in on that. Thank you.
Great. I will send that, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair Davis. That's my one point.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. McKinney?
Uh, this is Amy White. I have a question.
Ms. White.
Uh, Mr. McKinney, can you talk about any legislation that included our state's cooperative innovative high schools?
Yes, absolutely. And if, uh, you go back to the, the, um, pages that had a multitude of bills, um, and eight, actually eight sixteen. Kind of look at which page it's on. You know what? It is not actually on there. I'm sorry, Ms. White. So eight, eight sixteen was signed into session law and for our cooperative innovative high schools. It provides 1.88 million to support those schools. There's also a couple of other, uh, pieces to that, and I will gladly send you a bill summary of that and also the link, uh, when, um, I finish with this presentation.
Thank you so much. I would appreciate that and any details, um, that will greatly impact our cooperative innovative. So thanks, Mr. McKinney.
And I apologize for not, not being on that page. I will add that on there. Thank you.
No problem, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. McKinney and for your work at the legislature and thanks to our partners in the General Assembly for their support of our public educate, public school students. I now turn to Superintendent Johnson for the superintendent's report.
Having our ceremony for the Teacher of the Year, I want to thank all the staff at DPI that have worked hard on that. Uh, it was supposed to happen in April, uh, but we are now going to have appropriate this, appropriate, uh, date tomorrow, but that is the spring for everyone to decide an announcement of the year. Last one, I highlighted the graduates and the educators for everything they've done to this crisis. I think it's appropriate this month to highlight the local superintendents and their central office staff for the amazing work they have done over the past month. Uh, while many people were able to take a, uh, sigh of relief when school let out, superintendents and their staff had to get right to work, principals had to get right to work, planning for what would be an unprecedented return to school, uh, in the fall. And, uh, Really appreciate that superintendents have taken such leadership through this. As much as we have tried to help them as much as possible with guidance and support from the state, ultimately the way the, who did is coming down to help advisors at DHHS, this will ultimately follow on the shoulders of those superintendents. And we want to recognize that how much we support them and how we are here in Raleigh to help be their force. There was a lot of frustration and anger, uh, when the governor did not make an announcement on schools last week. Superintendents have done a lot of work to get ready for that, for the day, that announcement. Um, I've, I've let superintendents know that I did express that frustration on a phone call with the governor and that their voices have been heard. The governor has said he is working to get an announcement as quickly as he possibly can. Uh, my hat is off to superintendents who have gone ahead and decided on what plans they are going forward with and have already let parents and teachers, students know what that's going to happen. With that, we hope to be back in classrooms in August, and I would propose to this state board that we should look at meeting in person again in August. I went and met in person with the treasurer for the Council of State meeting. Uh, it is, uh, quite possible with the facilities at DPI to do proper social distancing and mask wearing, uh, but I, I am adamant about getting back into our building, uh, considering we are asking principals and teachers and students to go back to theirs. Uh, so that is for discussion and I, I look forward to having that with you in the month ahead. Thanks.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson, for your report. And on your last point, that in fact is an item of discussion that we're considering, um, for our August meeting in person, and we'll be evaluating that. So I appreciate that recommendation and I share that, that idea with you. Any questions for Superintendent Johnson on his report? Hearing none. Uh, we will now proceed to the remaining committee reports and I'll remind committee chairs and the audience that all voting on consent and any item requiring action will be done at the end of the agenda via roll call. We'll begin our committee work today with the Educator Standards and Practice Committee chaired by Dr. Olivia Oxendine. Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you, Chair Davis. I am Olivia Oxendine, and I have the privilege of chairing the Educator Standards and Practice Committee of the State Board of Education. And joining me in that responsibility is Ms. Amy White. Board members, if you, you recall at our, during our June meeting, we had a very, um, enlightening presentation by Dr. Cynthia Martin, who presented the result from the 2020 colle- biennial collection cycle of the Teacher Working Condition Survey. Chock full of interesting data, eye-opening questions, and, uh, a, a really good discussion afterwards about what to do next. It is good data, yet it is static data. Where can we go next? I, I'm recalling a statement from Dr. Martin. She made the statement, "So now that we know, so what?" And that, that certainly inspired me to go to the, to a different step, to the next step. And since our June meeting, we have had a, um, a, a rather, uh, short meeting, but yet it was a very productive meeting about maybe a revisit of the legislation that created the Teacher Working Condition Survey to refresh that legislation, to use the legislative, um, route to perhaps think about, um, some pilots across the state, interested, interested school districts that would like to do the next step. We talked about, um, uh, philanthropy in the private sector, maybe grantors who would have an interest in developing, designing RFPs to address the teacher working conditions relay data. Just a very vibrant discussion, which brings me to, um, to a point, this, this important point, today's presentation is going to be, um, give us a practical look at what is going on with the TWCS, um, at the district level. And I'm going to ask Dr. Martin to come forward in a virtual way to present our presenter and, uh, to kind of set up what we are about to learn from a district perspective. And that presenter, I'm very proud to say, is Dr. Robert Grimacy from the Moore County School District. He is the superintendent there. And I'm also going to add a little, uh, a bit more to this, uh, and say that today Moore County has been highlighted, uh, with Dr. Grimacy coming, uh, before us and also with our Teacher of the Year, Mariah Morris. So both of them are fine educators and very good examples of what we desire in, uh, public servants in the realm of public education. So Dr. Martin, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Um, during our, uh, meeting that resulted from the June presentation, uh, we started talking about the usefulness of the survey. And, um, the usefulness of the survey is basically as useful as the districts deem it to be. So during that discussion, um, the first district that came to my mind is Moore County. I had, um, several conversations with, um, Superintendent Bob and members of his central office and our Teacher of the Year about the usefulness of the reports, the timeliness of the reports. Um, it is not just the superintendent who is looking at it. It is ingrained in the culture, um, of this district. And so I don't have anything else to say. I think, uh, Dr. Grimacy will say it all about how they use the survey and how it has been a benefit, the data has been a benefit to the district. So at this time, I turn it over to Dr. Grimacy.
Well, thank you, Dr. Martin, and thank you for establishing a standard that I can't possibly live up to in the next couple of minutes here. Chairman Davis and members of the board, Dr. Oxendine, uh, I am very pleased, uh, that we were able to hire Mariah Morris back from you, and, uh, she currently resides in the office right next to the superintendent in a new role where she'll be, uh, uh, well-suited to ensure innovation across Moore County schools. And, uh, I'll be happy to pass along your regards after the meeting, although I think she's listening in. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to share a brief summary of one of Moore County School's many best practices. I come to you this morning in response to two inquiries. First, Dr. Oxendine's request that I brief you on Moore County's applications of, uh, not only teacher, but staff and student survey outcomes. And second, Dr. Townsend Smith's, uh, suggestion that I illustrate how we incorporate those outcomes into our strategic planning and evaluation processes. It's my hope that you'll find this information to be valuable in your own ongoing leadership of continuous improvement across all of our state's public schools. Moore County School's current strategic plan was approved by our Board of Education in June of 2018, following an intensive six-month engagement with our staff, parents, students and community. The plan underwent its first cycle of evaluation in the fall of 2019, which resulted in the school board's forthcoming action on a set of updates and revisions during its meeting this coming Monday, July 13th. Board action was delayed due to the COVID-19 crisis. As you can see, our strategic evaluation and plan revision cycle is scheduled to occur in the fall of each odd numbered year, with associated revisions and updates being considered by the school board in the first quarter of the subsequent even-numbered year. The plan consists of five domains, each of which are evaluated based on measures associated with two or three objectives. Each objective is evaluated based on two to seven strategies, and survey outcomes serve as one of multiple criteria depending on the objective and/or the strategy. Here are a few examples. Domain one of our strategic plan focuses on student academic achievement. Strategy two, under objective three of that domain, calls for us to provide professional development focusing on the use of data analysis to impact school improvement. Composite outcomes from the North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey's Teacher Leadership and Professional Learning Opportunities Question Clusters inform our evaluation of strategy two. Domain two of our strategic plan focuses on student safety, health and welfare. Strategy three, under objective two of that domain, seeks to integrate behavioral and relationship-building support systems and frameworks into all schools. A variety of composite outcomes from the TWC survey and our three annual student surveys inform our evaluation of that strategy. Domain three of our strategic plan focuses on employee culture and capacity. Strategies one through four, under objective one of that domain, seek to ensure that district policies and practices contribute to supportive and collaborative working conditions of its employees. Composite outcomes from the TWC and the Moore County Classified Employees Working Condition Survey inform our evaluation of all four of those strategies. You're already familiar with the content and construct of the North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey, which by now you realize I'm referring to as the TWC survey. In Moore County, it serves as a summative measure during even-numbered years as we evaluate our strategic objectives and the performance of our principals and senior staff. More importantly, its outcomes inform formative assessment of our culture that continues with what we call DIP with what we call dipstick surveys during the odd-numbered years and into the winter months leading up to the even-numbered years TWC administration. The formative dipstick surveys are administered through our Panorama platform with questions tending to focus on issues that suggested cultural need during the most recent TWC survey administration. Each school improvement team determines the questions that are included on the dipstick surveys and then uses the outcomes to evaluate progress on applicable objectives in their respective school improvement plan. TWC survey outcomes are benchmarked with the equivalent strength of student academic and behavior measures for the purpose of administrator evaluations. They also serve as key components in the school and district improvement planning and our teacher advisory process. For historical perspective, Moore County Schools engaged in no follow-up analysis of the Teacher Working Condition Survey outcomes prior to 2014-15. So the result described on line one of this slide should come as no surprise. We registered an overall composite of 75.94, which was five points below our Region Four average and four points below the state average. We ranked dead last, 12th out of 12 districts in our region, and there was a statistically significant difference between us and the 11th-ranked district. As you can see, our results in 2016, 2018, and 2020 suggest that our diligence was worthwhile. While we slipped about two points from 2018 to 2020, we actually improved our regional ranking from third to second. We also are quite proud of the fact that we achieved 100% teacher participation in 2018 and '20, even with the COVID-19 disruption. Between 2014 and '16, our staff worked with our Classified Employees Advisory Committee to adapt the state Teacher Working Condition Survey questions for classified employees. We conducted our first administration of the Classified Employees Survey in 2016 and subsequent administrations in 2018 and 2020. Question clusters on the Classified Employees Survey focus on the degree to which our employees feel appreciated and valued, their satisfaction with the school district, pay and benefits, supervisor relationships, training and resources, and general work environment. Like the TWC, outcomes from the Classified Employees Survey are incorporated into administrator evaluations with action plans required for results that drop below 80%. The outcomes also serve as a key component in the leadership team's ongoing discussion with the district-wide Classified Employees Advisory Committee. Prior to 2015, Moore County Schools distributed district oversight of our students' social and emotional well-being among four different administrators. We consolidated that oversight with an Office of Student Support Services during the 2016-17 school year. Today, we are very proud of our comprehensive and coordinated district-wide oversight of student safety, health, welfare, and equity. There's much more to that story than I'd be happy to share at another time. For today's purposes, our strategic objectives and strategies associated with student safety, health, welfare, and equity also are subject to robust program evaluation and refinement that is informed by teacher and student survey outcomes among a variety of key measures. Three surveys provide the bulk of the student input. All three are made available to our students through the Panorama platform. The first is the Social Emotional Learning Survey, which is administered to all students in grades three through 12 to gauge their skills and competencies with respect to grit or perseverance, growth mindset, social awareness, as well as their perception of school safety, sense of belonging, student-teacher relationships, and their engagement in their school. The survey is administered in the fall, and the outcomes inform our planning, development, and evaluation of SEL professional development, school and district improvement, teacher-student and parent advisory committee processes, and the School and District Safety Committee assessment and planning processes. Age-appropriate questions are drawn from the Panorama question bank. The second student survey is the Climate-Culture Survey, which is administered to all seventh, ninth, and eleventh graders to gauge their perceptions of equity, school safety and climate, and the rigor of school expectations. The Climate-Culture Survey is administered in the spring, and the outcomes inform our planning, development, and evaluation of, again, SEL professional development, school and district improvement, teacher, student, parent, and minority community advisory committee processes. We have a, we use the term minority community, but each one has got its own brand. One is the African-American Community Advisory Committee. The other one is the Hispanic Community Advisory Committee. In both cases, in all of these cases, the narrative is informed by the survey outcomes on a variety of surveys, in this case, the Climate-Culture Survey. School and District Safety Committee assessment and planning also is informed by the outcomes from this survey. Questions are drawn from the Panorama question bank, but also from the U.S. Office of Civil Rights Survey on school safety, climate, and equity. The final survey is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is administered to all eighth, tenth, and twelfth graders to assess their behavior choice patterns with respect to personal safety, sexual activity, and their use of alcohol, drugs, and tobacco. Questions are drawn from the Center for Disease Control's Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which are nationally normed. Given the personal nature of the questions, special precautions are taken on this survey to ensure students' anonymity and their ability and their parents' ability to opt out of participation. I would note on the previous two surveys that I mentioned, the questions are not of real personal nature. And in some cases, particularly on the SEL survey, they inform us a lot, inform teachers a lot about their students' levels of perseverance and their sense of relationships with the school and with the teacher, which are very helpful in the day-to-day engagement with the child. And finally, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is administered in the spring, and outcomes inform our planning, development, and evaluation of all the same processes as the Climate-Culture Survey. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my briefing. You'll note that I didn't go line by line through each of the slides, just provide you with a summary. There's a lot of gray matter on those slides because I wanted to make sure that the public record had the essential details and that you all would have that for your own reference if you wanted to follow up with any questions. But we're happy, I'll be happy to go back and get into any of those details that I might skimmed over a little bit. Moore County Schools and our school board are very grateful for this opportunity to present this, one of our many best practices, but we're also grateful for your service and leadership you afford to the children of North Carolina, particularly during a year that's as challenging as the one that we're in right now. And so right now, I'm happy to answer any questions or to receive any feedback that you might care to offer.
Thank you ever so much. This was Dr. Grimacy. And by the way, board members and those of you listening in, he is lovingly called, I believe, Dr. Bob in places around Moore County.
Known by no other name when your last name is Grim Messi.
And then also, I believe you are currently the Chair of the Sand Hills SREC Superintendent's Council. Is that correct?
Actually, I just wrapped up my tenure in that role, and Dr. Robert Taylor from Bladen County is now our very capable chair and will do a good job for us in coming year.
Well, he has, we're very, the board is very familiar with Dr. Taylor and the fine work that he and his educators do in little tiny Bladen County. So your group is always in good hands in the Sand Hills, always. A fine cohort of superintendents. And I'll turn to my colleagues on the board if you have any questions or comments you'd like. Make it.
Dr. Oxendine, it's JB.
Yes, Mr. Buckston.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Dr. Bob, or maybe it should be Dr. Data. I appreciate this commitment to data-driven decision-making, not to be too trite, but the degree to which you're getting data from your students and your teachers to drive a lot of your school improvement planning and leadership work in the district. It's great to see the degree to which it's happening, the depth of which is happening, and the way in which you're using it in evaluation and just letting data anchor decision-making. So I just want to start out and appreciate that. And I wanted to tie it back, and this may be less a question, Dr. Grimacy, for you than it is for Dr. Martin, but it could be for both of you. I want to tie it back to the presentation we received back in Greensboro at NCA&amp;T in the fall, when we looked at a variety of heat maps that connected, if I'm getting this right, clusters of questions that had the greatest connection or predictiveness to student achievement from the teacher working condition data. And painted a little bit of a roadmap through those heat maps of where a district might focus its work and just get any commentary about that work. I know, I'll just speak for myself, although I felt like there were a number of folks who were impressed by the ability to focus a district's attention in some key areas that, again, are highly predictive of student achievement. I just wanted to see any comments you had on that or Dr. Martin had about what we're providing to districts to provide that scaffolding and supporting.
I can take that one. Dr. Grimacy, I don't know if you want to comment on it, but that is called the Ingersoll Data Reports, and we shared that, we sent those reports out for the 2018 data. We have another round of reports that we will be sharing in August with district leaders. We also plan on coming back to the board to share that dataset in August, I believe. Indiana invites us back, where we will share those data points with the State Board and send them out to all the local. So that dataset is coming.
Yes, and if I could, Cynthia, I'll add simply that Dr. Martin has been extremely helpful working with the new vendor this year. There had to be some clarity on how to take all of that data and present it in a way that can be consumed by myself, my staff, and my colleagues across the state. And, you know, as I indicated, we dropped two points from last time. We still, you know, are very proud of where we stand with that, but the obvious question then is, why did we drop the two points? And if I, you know, just to be, for the purpose of full transparency, when I look across, the heat chart immediately shows me that we've got to attend to teacher perceptions of managing student conduct. We're not unlike a lot of other school districts, but we've had, without belaboring it too much, we've had two factors that we've worked on during the last two years. One is addressing the growing pupil teacher ratios in grades six through 12 that result from our need to shift locally-funded teachers from six through 12 into K through three to ensure that we comply with the lower pupil teacher ratio mandate in K through three. We have to, in order to accommodate that, because the children are spread about, we have to move that. So we're interested in engaging with our teachers in the coming months to see to what extent that, particularly at the secondary level, where their responses were informed by any concerns they have on that. But even much more of a challenge is, is we've had a really heavy focus on equity. We've had a focus on appropriate disciplinary procedures and building relationships with students and not as much reliance on out-of-school suspension. And I think it's reasonable that among professionals, there's going to be a little bit of tug-and-pull in that conversation. And so those would be two hypotheses that I draw from that drop, that we'll be having discussions with our teacher advisory committee and also each of the principals at the building level, just offering that as an example, Mr. Buckston, of how we use those heat charts to identify and close in. And of course, we've got a heat chart. Dr. Martin and the vendor have provided us with a heat chart for all of our individual schools. So that's a tool that we really wear out in Moore County, and I'm sure some other districts do as well.
Dr. Grimacy, I appreciate the kind of candor in the answer, and I think a great example of your leadership and how data can point the way. But I also think you've highlighted the degree to which data can point to things which have impact on state policy. So we start thinking about the trade-offs with class-sized mandates and what it means districts need to do, and then where it impacts them kind of downstream. I think you're raising another important area that the survey impacts not just your leadership decisions locally, but perhaps leadership decisions at the state level that we see from this data. So I appreciate very much your being here today. And Dr. Martin, thanks for the advanced opportunity to look at some more of that heat map data. Thanks, Dr. Oxendine.
You're most welcome. From my other board members, do you have questions or comments before we bring this part of the agenda to closure? I just want to say again, such a fine example of how data can be transferred into application to improve performance, but also to keep an eye and keep a gauge on things like climate and morale and, of course, performance. But probably stimulating those who are listening, superintendents and teachers and others listening to this presentation or getting ideas from this presentation in terms of ways that we can also step up and step forward and make meaning in this important data that come from the survey. So again, thank you tremendously for being with us, for giving us a few minutes of your time, and you can probably expect to hear from us again in the future.
Very good. Always happy to help.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Martin.
Dr. Oxendine, may I just make a brief comment? This is Mr. Ford.
Mr. Ford.
I was just going to comment again, say thank you for presenting this in depth and being an exemplar for using this sort of qualitative information. Just board members, as you know, yesterday, we presented a pretty exhaustive action framework, but the usage of teacher working condition surveys as well as student surveys is a part of our action framework and is aligned with that work. So I just wanted to draw our attention to that as well.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Ford, you have caused me to come up with another question that someone sent me in a text message that I need to, need to get in this final question to Dr. Grimacy. Talk about, for just a minute, if you would, talk about the role of parents in the administration of the survey. Are they informed about the survey? Do they have an opportunity to be made aware of the indicators or the dimensions of the area of surveying?
Very, very good question. Thank you, Dr. Oxendine, for passing that along. Absolutely. Every year before the surveys are administered, they are presented to the school board. They're tweaked from year to year, but our Director of Student Services comes before our board, presents the surveys. They are posted on our website for a month. Public is afforded the opportunity to weigh in and be informed that the surveys are being made available. And then they come back the following month after there has been any particular input from the community, and the opportunity for adjustments at that point is made. So we've met the need to ensure transparency and public awareness. We've met the need for individuals to express any concerns that we have, because whenever you start asking questions, children, you have to be sensitive to that. And then the school board votes to endorse the survey after the opportunity for public input. Only then do we then begin the process of moving on. As I indicated, we take an opt-out approach because we want to make sure that the data is secure, but we go to great lengths to make sure that all parents and students are informed of their opportunity to opt out at any point.
No, I really.
I think I answered the question, I hope.
You absolutely did, and I'm so, I'm happy that I remembered it because it's very, very important to this discussion, the transparency piece, because parents can get a little bit nervous about surveys and assessments in general. So it seems as though you've got a very good approach to that.
Yes, ma'am.
And probably well-received because of it, not with parents.
Yeah, we receive very, very little impact, and we have very, very few opt-outs. We have them, but we've been very pleased. Our parents and our community have been very supportive.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and expect to hear from us again.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Suppose I need to unmute myself. The next item, ES and P1, is a discussion item, and this is a proposal coming before the board for discussion this month and perhaps our approval next month. And this is a proposal to establish educator preparation program, and the name of the initiative is TEACH. I believe that Dr. Seiberg is going to come forward and walk us through this proposal. And there will be some time for, as usual, some time for questions and comments by you board members. So, Dr. Seiberg.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine, and good morning, board members. The passage of Senate Bill 599 into law back in 2017 provided a pathway for entities to apply in North Carolina to become initially authorized educator preparation program providers in the state. Now, that process includes, it's outlined in 599, but includes a formal application where the entity provides evidence that they can meet the requirements, standards, and reporting expectations that are in law and policy, and they send that and submit that into the department. That application then is peer reviewed by a team of experts from across the existing educator preparation community, and we select folks from the community that have national accreditation experience, so in working with reviewing other institutions of higher ed and educator preparation programs around the country for CAPE accreditation, to assure that those expectations in law and policy are met in that application. And then when the reviewing team is satisfied that the entity has met those requirements, the application is then recommended to this board for formal approval to become an initially authorized ed prep provider. Once that authorization is allowed, then the entity can operate in the state to develop candidates seeking licensure to teach in the state, not degrees, but licensure to teach in the state. And then that entity is also then subject to the same rigor, accountability, and expectations of any other authorized education preparation program in the state. Since the passage of 599 back in 17, four organizations have been approved through this process. Today, we're bringing you the formal application from this organization called TEACH, who's seeking formal approval to become initially an authorized educator preparation provider. They have been reviewed by the peer review experts and formally recommended by that team to this board for consideration. And if they are approved by the board, their intent is to begin providing services in the state this coming January of 2020.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Seiberg. And board members, do you have any, if I trust that you've had an opportunity to read the proposal? If not, I would encourage you to do so between now and our next meeting in August. Do you have any questions, or do you have any comments that you would like to share at this time? Hearing none from my colleagues, I would like to take just a minute, Dr. Seiberg, and raise a couple of questions that I have. I'm not going to go into detail, but I perused the proposal a couple of times, and I'm sure that these areas can either be explained, maybe I'm missing something in my understanding and reading of areas, or I feel sure that if the preparers of this proposal can probably address the questions that I have. Overall, I'm going to couch my concerns in a couple of categories. One of them is in the area of program quality. I have a specific question with respect to a course that deals with elementary literacy, such an important course and an EPP curriculum. We have spent a considerable amount of time as a state board talking about K3 literacy and B12 literacy and reading specifically. And I do have some questions about perhaps the need for a little bit more rigor in the area of elementary literacy, reading slash reading. I would like to see some mention of reading science, because that has gained a lot of our time and thought and approval over the last year. I am sure the developers of this proposal can address that and probably do so within short order. I would also, I also have some questions about, this is tied to, related in many ways to rigor. I wonder about needing only six hours of clock time to complete course assignments. That seems not to be sufficient to complete all the assignments that some of these high level advanced courses would require. So maybe I'm misunderstanding, and I stand to be corrected and clarified, but I would like that addressed. I also have some questions about, in general, course design. Specifically, I'm thinking, looking at a, I think this is a course, E111 slash S111, and it has to do with lesson planning. My goodness, we know that lesson planning, knowing how to design lessons, is absolutely fundamental in the instructional component. So there are a couple of questions I have around planning effective lessons and another course related to that, results focused lesson study, wondering about why two courses are needed, could they not be collapsed? And in general, another final category, and again, maybe I've overlooked this in my reading and perusing the proposal, I don't see, I don't recall seeing anything related to the North Carolina standard course of study in the area of art, science, reading, literacy, social studies. So I would like for the preparers of this program, the designers of these programs, this program, this proposal, I should say, to give some consideration to those key areas.
Be happy to share those comments back to the organization for a formal reply.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll go on to the final item, and that, this is a consent item, and this is, was presented last by Dr. Tim Evans, and it has to do with the, Pepsi has endorsed this change, and the change is relative to the reading graduate level course and the audiology test codes and cut scores, and those changes will appear in our policy manual. So with that said and completed, Chair Davis, that completes the ES and P report for July.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. We will now move to our last committee work of the day, and that's the Business Operations Committee chaired by our Vice Chair, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. With your permission, I'd like to take two, our first two items, on behalf of the Biz Op Committee and along with Todd Chastain, Chair of this committee, items Biz Op 4 and 5, which are action items. We have a couple of staff members who have some time constraints, and it would be helpful if we could do those out of order. So with your permission, Chair Davis, I'm going to go to Biz Op 4 first, followed by Biz Op 5, and then we'll go back in the regular order.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Biz Op 4 is the local school administrative unit teacher compensation models and advanced teacher teaching roles, grantees, and funding for approval. I think everyone will recall, we heard a presentation from Tom Tomlin about this several days ago, and it is now before us for action, having had a chance to look at the recommendations and to see the proposed grants. Dr. Tomlin, is there anything you would like to add to your presentation that has come up since the time when you made it to us recently?
Good morning, Vice Chair Duncan. Thank you. One note that I would make is the passage of 681 that Mr. McKinney talked to you about earlier. That has a provision in it related to the teacher compensation and advanced teaching roles grant. In a particular interest in that, in that provision, is that the, that the grantees, the LEAs that receive the grant funds must specify the schools at which the grant will be administered, and it is those schools and only those schools that would benefit from the class size waiver that comes along with the granting opportunity. So my assumption is that that was effective July 1, 2020, and that that would govern any of the grants that we approve here today.
All right, and Mr. McKinney, perhaps can, if he is still on, can inform us to confirm that belief, or have you already confirmed that with him, Dr. Tomlin?
I have not.
Okay. Well, perhaps if Mr. McKinney's still with us, if not now, he can confirm later. Does that change in any way the recommendations that you would make in the event that that's the case? I think Mr. McKinney may be with us now.
I am, and I'm looking at that currently, okay? I'll be back with you on that.
Very good. Dr. Tomlin, would that change any of the recommendations and approaches that were made by the group evaluating these grants, that provision in any way?
So as you recall from our discussion, we put forth, we recommended to the board an option, a funding model, those C or D. So C, just to refresh everyone's recollection, in, you know, that's slide 19. So just to refresh your memory, that was kind of a, an average between a flat rate reduction and a reduction based on the PPE expenditure of the grant program. And so we came to that, and as you see, Proposal 4 would experience a 31% reduction in their funding under that model, and the other districts, you know, not as large, but certainly a big reduction. And so we reached out to those districts to see if that would affect their implementation. And I think the general response back from that was, we could still carry through, but would we be able to reduce the scope and size of our grant, you know, the schools that we covered, to reflect that loss of funding? And I indicated that I would raise that with the board. I think that would be a reasonable assumption, that if you cut the funding, you would also might need to cut the scope and scale of the project or the proposal. And so that has implications back to 681, because if there are fewer schools, those schools would not benefit from the class reduction size. They only could apply that class reduction to those schools that they selected to implement.
And I gather you haven't gotten feedback from those districts with respect to that further issue, that if you reduced your schools, will that cause an adverse effect if you received the grant in terms of how you would then provide appropriate personnel in the schools that are not part of the grant?
That's right. And we would need to, we would need to discuss that with them. I think it's important, I mean, there's not much we could do about that provision in the law if that is, if that prevails on this, on this grant application, but we would just need to make the schools, the grantees aware of that new provision, and, because that's going to be important for their planning for this coming school year.
All right. And I think there was some discussion when we had this in the first place between Option C and Option D, and I believe your recommendation was Option C, but that Option D was very close, and it was not an easy decision to make for us considering it. Does this change your thoughts at all about whether Option D becomes a more preferable approach to take in terms of the department's recommendation to the board?
So I don't think so. I mean, with the, with those new provisions notwithstanding, I can't deny that the class size reduction is a really important part of this flexibility and this, and the whole grant application process. So I would still, I would still think Option C would be the preferable model, but that does come with some, some very clear communication to those partners of what this, of what 681 means for them moving forward. Their expectations might be different, and we would have to modify those expectations.
Well, again, that may bring us back to, Mr. McKinney, have you had a chance yet to determine what the effective date of that legislation will be as pertaining to these models here?
No, sir. I'm looking at that right now. It'll probably take me a few minutes, and I also would want to talk to Tom after this, so I'll report back to you all.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask, let me ask this question, Dr. Tomlin. Are we, given that there could be some change that we're, in terms of what the effective date is, that could impact how the districts who may be selected under Option C would look at it, should we pause on this vote until we got better clarity and to the extent that it is effective as of July 1, that the districts would have an opportunity to consider ramifications of Option C and what effect it would have if there's not a waiver of class size in the other schools, and whether they still want to pursue the grant? Should we, should we not consult with the applicants first before making a final decision?
I, I would say that would be prudent if the board plans on holding an emergency meeting sometime between now and the next board meeting. My concern here is that these districts need to have time to implement for this year, and that pushes, if we're not making the decision till August, that doesn't leave them much time to move forward.
Right.
And we have not, we have not indicated to any of these four, which are masked, that they are, that they are the ones under consideration. As far as we know, that none of them know whether they're being considered.
Right. You would have to ask the broader group of applicants, I'm assuming.
Indeed.
Yes. All right. Well, I think we can probably do an emergency meeting if that's needed, and it sounds like, if I'm reading this correctly, unless Mr. McKinney comes back and says that July 1 is not the effective date, why this? If that's where we end up, then I think you would want to go forward. If we don't end up there, then it seems prudent that, as you just said, to call the districts, the applicants, and to get their position with respect to moving forward, and then I believe we can set up to hold an emergency meeting as may be necessary to meet the time deadline of as quickly as we can as school is starting so soon.
And I do.
I think it is going to be difficult, and we'll act pretty quick on the meeting, is my sense of it.
And I do apologize for this, Mr. Duncan. I did not anticipate that curve ball with 681. This process started long before 681 was even on our radar, so.
Yes. Well, we just have to adapt to circumstances, so there's no need to apologize.
And I am, I am, I am reading it as effective July 1, 2020.
All right. In that context, it sounds like it would be, the request from the board would be to make as expedited inquiries we possibly can with respect to the districts as to whether it would have any effect on Option C, and schedule a meeting as quickly as we can, because as you pointed out, time is short, and the districts need as much advance notice as possible if they're to be awarded a grant. That, you agree that's the proper course to proceed at this point, Dr. Duncan? the proper course to proceed at this point, Dr. Tomlin?
I think that is wise, and I, I have a very strong feeling that I have staff members already on the phone calling these folks, so.
Your radar is telling you the waves are out there?
I think so.
All right. All right, very good. If, and if for some reason you, your very diligent and fast staff have responses from all applicants before the meeting's over, please come back and tell us. I'm not expecting that that would be a standard one too high, but if that happens to happen, please let us know.
Sure.
All right. Are there any other questions by the board members on this fast-developing issue? All right, not hearing any. Let's go on then to BizOp 5, which is the K through 3 Reading Diagnostic. I think board members will recall, at our last meeting, the staff was asked, over the course of seven or eight days, to get as much additional information as to those vendors who would qualify to be fully EVA data compliant, and therefore part of the one-year choice offering, if you will, to districts, while we go through a more detailed procurement process to culminate in a lengthier contract with most likely one vendor based on the previous legislation. But that's all to be discussed. Dr. Tomlin, should that come to you or to Dr. Stegall? Perhaps Dr. Stegall, you may want to give a overview of where we are?
Sure. Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. As you mentioned, the board asked for a list of the, from the 14 previously approved alternative assessments companies, to look at to see which of those met all the requirements for REAT to achieve to be for this year-only, a tool that the districts could choose from. And from that, you had received five names that were potentially, could be up for approval on your vote. I want to give you an update on those five, and then update you on one more. So iStation was one of those five. They do meet all the requirements. We present that company to you for approval. NWA MAP, as we spoke to the company, and like many vendors, they have multiple products, multiple tools. NWA MAP does have, does meet the requirements, but it requires school districts that utilize this to have both NWA MAP growth plus reading proficiency. It's two different products. Together, those products that work in conjunction with one another would be approved, would meet the requirements to be approved, should the board approve them. So we're bringing that company forward as a vendor for your approval. A third is STAR. STAR, again, just like NWA, STAR has multiple products. We submit that STAR would meet all the requirements one of two ways. Originally, STAR had been listed as STAR Reading. That is a product they have. By itself, STAR Reading does not meet all the requirements, but with, when paired with STAR Early Literacy, it does meet all the requirements. Or STAR Early Literacy by itself will meet all the requirements. So if you approve it, we will make sure the field is clarified on, if you're purchasing from STAR, which products would meet the requirements. So STAR is the third company, third vendor. Fourth vendor is iReady. iReady meets all the requirements. They have submitted their data for EVA's data verification. Our team is going to work with SAS to run those, that information. If Mr. Tomlin is on the phone, he certainly can speak to it better than I can, but what it amounts to is the formality of approving or analyzing their data has to be done still by SAS, but we don't anticipate any concerns with that. They've met all the Lexile linkage study. Everything else that is required has been done. They have all the five components of reading, all that is required. It's just their data analysis is still yet to be done. Mr. Tomlin, would you like to speak to that, if you're still on the phone? You may have hung up.
No, I'm here. I'm sorry. That is correct. So I don't want the board to get the impression that this is a, an in-depth analysis. We're simply looking as a preliminary look at the distribution of their assessments, to be sure that they appear to be such that can function in our growth model. SAS has indicated this is a pretty quick analysis, and in general, nationally, national assessments like these do meet those requirements. So I don't want anyone to get the impression that this is some kind of onerous or potentially damning analysis. It's more than likely that all these will pass without any complication.
Right. So these four vendors, iReady, iStation, NWA MAP, which includes their two products, Growth and Reading Fluency, as well as STAR, and STAR has two products, either Early Literacy by itself or Early Literacy paired with its Reading products. So they're the four that were originally on the list with clarifications of which products within their company. The fifth one that was on your list originally, Imagine Learning, they still do not have a Lexile linking study for K2, I believe it is. It's on the chart. We've reached out to them. They notified us that it's pending, and that puts them in the same category as Amplify, which is also missing a Lexile linking study, and they too have told us that that is pending. We're not recommending that either of these companies at this time until we have that linkage study in hand, and it meets all the compliance measures. And then EVA's, it also is compatible with EVA's. So we're bringing to you the four vendors, iReady, iStation, NWA MAP, and STAR for your consideration for approval today.
All right. Just to ask the question that I think would be asked by, or would be on the minds of many, the three of them, you said as we sit here right this moment are clearly 100% approved, iStation, then NWEA, and STAR, although with both of those the caveat that there's two products that must be employed from those vendors to meet all the qualifications. But they, in fact, as we sit here right now, meet them. With respect to iReady, what I'm hearing is there's a 99% probability slash belief or higher that they will meet it, but that verification won't happen probably sometime next week. We're in that timeframe? The finalize, the finalization, if you will, of the verification from SAS?
Yes, sir. I think you've summarized that well. iReady has met all the requirements. It's just the analysis of their data, just to make sure it's compatible with EVA's, which it's somewhat of a formality, but it is a requirement, so yes.
All right. So I put out to the board, do we want to move forward with approval of the three that Dr. Stegall, and we also have a policy to look at as well, so we'll backtrack to that in a moment, but do we want to look at the approval of the three that are ready now with the, what I hear is a staff assurance that iReady is almost certainly to be cleared and approved very shortly, but would still require then the board to approve it once that final sign-off from SAS of EVA's compatibility was, was done? Are there any board thoughts or comments on that?
Vice Chair Duncan, this is Olivia.
Yes. Please, Dr. Ox and Don.
Yes, I just have my question, Dr. Stegall. Now, I don't see, I don't, I can't see which assessment tool it is, but one of them, one of them also assesses fluency, reading fluency?
They, I'm sorry, are you asking a question, or are you?
Yes, I am. Here's my question. My question is this. Is it, is this, is that something that the department is interested in, assessing reading fluency?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I know, of course, it's important, but what I'm asking is it doesn't, that doesn't stand out in the others?
They all, so just for clarification, it's all embedded. So the column that says appropriate formative diagnostic for K2, we, there's five components of reading. Reading fluency is one of those, vocabulary, comprehension. So they all have it embedded within them, yes. The reason you see the word fluency, that's the name of the actual product that NWA MAP calls one of their products. But all of the companies have, are required to have comprehension and fluency as part of their overall assessment tool, so yes.
All right. So that's what stood out to me, because that is, that's unique from the other diagnostic tools, that they, they name a product. So it's, that's the name of the product?
Yes, ma'am. It's just the name of the product.
I got it. But anyway, back to your question, Vice Chair Duncan, I would be, I'm just one board member, but I would be certainly agreeable to what you're proposing.
Well, yeah, well, thank you. I'm really interested in the board's input on this. Would we approve three, or will we also approve iReady, pending its finalization of it submitted, and our staff has indicated a very high probability will be approved? Or do we, or do we wait till that approval takes place and then come back and complete the approval process for iReady to be part of it? Input from members would be most helpful. Thoughts from members?
Mr. Duncan, JB?
Yes, please.
If you don't mind, just a quick question before that consideration. This, this list has gone through some changes and modifications since it was first released publicly, and I just want to know from Dr. Stegall, given that with NWEA and STAR, there's a caveat now about what products need to go together to meet the standards the department has outlined, are there any other vendors that might come back and say, well, if you put these products together, we do as well? And are we looking at an elongated timeline to review additional proposals from vendors about putting products together? I just want to get a, some clarity for the districts about what this list is going to be, and for us.
Right. So the, the products who did not have a Lexile study, they, it has nothing to do with the actual products they offered. The companies don't offer, it's a very different story. So Lexile study eliminated many of them. And then if there were a case, again, we followed up on the companies that had been previously approved, and those who had submitted that they felt they had been approved or should be approved. We met with the company or discussed with the companies, had them provided documentation. I, I don't know for sure that other companies might not come forward, for example, saying that, yes, if you pair it with one of our other products, we certainly can meet the requirement. What we did, we had our team analyze all the tools that they had, all the products. And keep in mind, this is, an analogy I might give you is, if someone said, I'm going to buy a Toyota. Well, Toyota has 50 different versions, maybe, you know, in their product line. You might not even know all the certain modifications you can get, or the Corolla versus a Camry. They have lots of products, and we may not know every product, even under an umbrella of a subsection of their company. So we certainly can't guarantee they might not come forward and say, can we also be considered if we do this, this, and this? We have not had any of those who have brought that to us after analysis who still meet the requirement. We did have, as I, if you remember last week, I mentioned the company who said that very thing. We, we think we qualify, but as we did analysis, they still did not meet the Lexile linkage study requirement, even with them pairing their products with one another. So I know it's a long answer to a short question. I can't guarantee, but we don't certainly on the surface level anticipate that at this moment, but we certainly are cognizant that these, some of these companies are quite large and may have products that we have not seen yet or may not fully be aware of.
Okay, that's very helpful. I appreciate that, and appreciate the level of analysis you've been doing on this. Mr. Chair, if I could, one additional follow-up.
Please.
Just to make sure I'm getting this right. So it sounds like we have three providers, iStation, NWEA, MAP, and STAR, which are ready today, and then three, based on the chart, iReady, Imagine Learning, and Amplify, which the department may bring back pending the Lexile linkage or EVA's. I'm trying to remember the right language for iReady. With iReady being, you feel good about the EVA's data verification, but you still need to get it?
iReady doesn't need to go through linkage. It just needs to do data verification. So it's much, much, it's closer in the respect. It only has that final issue that's in the hands of SAS apparently, and waiting for SAS to simply process the data for the data verification.
Okay. So just to get it straight in my head, so we would either be at, depending on what happens with the other three vendors, three vendors or providers for districts to choose from, four, five, or a ceiling of six? Anywhere from three to six?
Yes, with the caveat that Amplify and Imagine Learning, our best guess would not be ready before sometime into August, and perhaps after the start of, after the August 17 proposed start date, and certainly after the jumpstart start date.
Got it. Thank you. That's clear. Thanks, Dr. Stegall.
Yes, sir.
Other, other members wish to comment or weigh in in terms of how we best proceed on this item?
Mr. Duncan, this is Ms. Kim. Based on what I've heard from Dr. Stegall, I would be comfortable with your proposal, I think you're proposing, that we go on and approve all four, with the caveat that if the SAS work comes back negative for iReady, then that would disqualify it.
Yes. All right. Thoughts of others? And again, iReady is in a position closer, as I understand it and as it's been described. So are there others who, I think Dr. Ox and Don expressed a somewhat similar thought, are there others who feel that that's an approach the board should take? So we can formalize a motion that we make here?
I think it would be helpful, I'm sorry, Ms. Duncan, JB?
Yeah, please.
I am definitely supportive of the three that are there, and I just want to make sure our districts have clarity about iReady. I know a lot of our districts use iReady for instructional support, so if they want to move into a contract, at what point can we give them peace of mind that that, that will in fact happen? So if we have some date certainty, we either come back to or-
I think the best information we have is that in no later than two weeks, they should know with some certainty, and it may be earlier than that. Is that right, David, Dr. Stegall?
That's, yes, sir. We anticipate ideally the, no later than the 23rd or so, but they are quite familiar that this is an expedited timeline, and we hopefully next week would be ideal, but we certainly don't anticipate more than two weeks.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, please.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Hearing what's been said, I support the four, iReady, iStation, Northwest, and STAR, with the caveat that we know that iReady is pending. This sends a clear picture to the LEAs that these are the four that you can choose from at this time, understanding there is some, that within two weeks, we would receiving the information concerning iReady.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hall. And I'm not trying to get a polling of all members, so let me just, having heard, I think, that somewhat several people suggest that approach. I think we can, I will encompass that as part of a recommended motion shortly. If Amplify Reading and Imagine Learning later get qualified and come to the board, I think the prognostications are that won't happen until into August. What would be- What would be, what would be the board's pleasure as to how to deal with that? My, my thought is if they come to the board and they've met all the requirements, we can say that, but on the other hand, it's, it's late for, just as a practical matter, it's then late for the districts to think about contracting. So I, I don't think there's any reason, I don't think there's a reason to suggest they shouldn't get compliant, approved from the board for compliant for some future purposes, but I think practically speaking, they will know, it's unlikely that they will be able to participate in contracts with the districts, since the districts will have to have moved forward already. Does anyone have a differing thought about that as we look at it?
Mr. Duncan, I have a question. I'm not sure it directly aligns to your most recent comment, this is Mrs. White.
Yeah, please, Ms. White.
Okay, so as we're, as we're thinking about these, it's my understanding through our previous discussions that this is just a, it's a one-year opportunity for districts across our state to contract with one of these particular vendors.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. And, and the, the understanding is that we would enter into a new request for proposal in, in hoping to next year, select a vendor, a statewide vendor. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So can you help me understand the alignment and, and timeline for when that statewide contract might be executed? I am thinking about districts entering into a one-year contract, and then the state entering into a, a, a contract that would supersede those, those district contracts. I just want to make sure that districts aren't spending money for a year's worth of product when the state's going to enter into a proposal and then individual districts, you know, would have two, two, two months. Just can you, can you help me understand alignment? And I want to make sure that our districts aren't spending unnecessarily month, unnecessarily, unnecessary funds on a year-wide contract when the state's going to execute a new one.
Yes, thank you for those timely questions. The planned approach here is to have, as you suggested, have this opportunity for these approved vendors for a one-year contract, and to initiate, initiate a robust procurement process that includes substantial input from the field. And the thought is should also, you know, that, that process should not, will take significant time as the last one did, but also it will be of some value to start the process after whatever the districts use as products go into use, so that there's, you know, that any input we get from products that haven't been used perhaps a lot will have available. And other products will be able to fully put forth what their capabilities would be to meet this. The plan, and I think part of the motion would be clearly to say this is a one-year contract, and districts should be very careful not to enter into contracts beyond that period, and expect state funding for it, and that the procurement process should report back in the February to April timeframe, so that as we look to a three-year contract, we're, we get it back plenty of time to have whoever the vendor's going to be can do whatever appropriate training over the summer before the next school year starts, and we can have a robust process and can have that, then come back and report to the board fully, and decision can be made with respect to the proposed vendor is the timeline. If that, if I've left out some part of answering your question, please, please ask again, I apologize.
No, sir, that, that does help clarify my concern. My next, my follow was going to be about training and the abundance of conversation that we had about training when we began using iStation, and concerns from the field about being adequately prepared to implement that in a, in a, in the most robust way. And so looking at, again, the procurement of the new contract, new statewide contract in whichever vendor that is selected, and the overlap of that contractor with the individual contracted vendors that our PSU's are using.
It would be our very strong goal to not have that happen again, as I recall, like you do, that there was a lot of concern about the, the training having to be done, Seth, and that that put a lot of work on the districts and on the vendor, for that matter. So the effort will be to have it in a timely procurement, robust and timely procurement that will allow that type of training to take place in an orderly manner. Our districts will have an awful lot on them in the coming year, and we certainly don't want to add to it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'll, I'll state what the recommendation would be then, and then take any other comments before we leave this topic. The recommendation will be that we offer to the districts a recommendation for a one-year contract only, the qualifying entities of iStation, NWEA, EAA with their combined products as will be described, as has been described by Dr. Segal and will be by the department. Also STAR, early literacy, again, with their product as combined as described by Dr. Segal. And then iReady, with the caveat for iReady, that that's subject to the final verification of EVOS data compatibility, which should occur in no more than two more weeks, and the districts therefore should take that into account, and that we, we, it's been described a very high probability that that approval will come, but we do have to get that approval for that to be final, but I think we can move forward on that basis. That, in addition to that, we have a policy that we've got for this, which has been before you for the, for this one year, setting out the proposal, we would be adopting the prop, the proposal, excuse me, adopting the early grade reading proficiency policy, PRC 085, for this one-year period. And in addition to that, we would be noting that as part of this motion, that the procurement process would start shortly, would involve heavy support from the field in terms of input, and obviously headed by the department, these procurement efforts, but with heavy support and input from the field, and with a expected timeline of trying to find a, a vendor, February to April timeframe of 2021. That would be the motion. Are there any comments, or that will be before you, are there any other comments on this? Not in the motion, but I would say, I think I've heard that if either Amplify or Imagine Learning come and make a request later for approval based on appropriate data, that we would certainly allow that to come before the board, whenever they move forward with that. So I believe that, I believe that covers all the, yeah, the comments, questions, or, but I think that's what you'll be asked to approve. All right, not hearing any. Thank you to Dr. Segal and Dr. Tomlin, I know this is taking up an effort on the part of your staff and, and yourselves, and so thank you for the work that you've done on this, and we now hope to move expeditiously so that our, our districts can move forward and get situated for the formative assessments that they'll have coming here. Let's then go back to BizOp 1, which is approval of contracts over $500,000. Tamika Dunn is here to answer any questions on those. I have not, I have not received any que, board members about contracts there to this. Are there questions for Ms. Dunn for approval of $1,000,000 pursuant to board policy? That's an action on first read item. All right, not hearing any, then let's go on to BizOp 2, which is the Cares Budget Proposal for the 10% reserve. As a quick reminder to the board, and I don't, I know you don't need one, so it really will be quick, with the 393 million or so assigned to the North Carolina schools, there was a 10% holdback, half percent of which, half percent of which would be designed to utilize whatever of that amount is necessary for administrative costs of the department to oversee this federal, use of this federal money. Remaining amount can be held back for projects that are consistent with the Cares guidelines, and we have spent some time as a board already talking about some of these needs, and we received input from the department, and we have received input from superintendents and from many others out in the field that have suggestions and thoughts about how a 10% reserve, or really a 9.5% reserve would be, would be utilized. And I want to give thanks to all, especially want to thank Dr. Townsend Smith, who has served as a convener of many committees and groups, and has assisted in terms of trying to put together a proposed document. You will see in your material two proposed documents. There's one from the department, and I believe that superintendent would like to speak to that one, and then there's an additional one that has been prepared through the work of Dr. Townsend Smith and the committee, and, and, in terms of gathering together all the information we've received. I know that our superintendent would like to speak to the DPI proposal, and want to afford that opportunity to him first, and then we'll speak about the other proposals for the board to be able to receive full information with respect to these proposals. Superintendent Johnson?
Thank you. Let me start with, I need to clarify what you just opened with, just some questions on my end. So what you have in front of you on the screen is the attachment that is called the DPI proposal. The DPI proposal has been in the works for weeks, and that has been crafted by the Legislative Policy and Funding Workgroup. The co-leads of that workgroup were Deanna Townsend Smith from the State Board and Chloe Gosage from DPI. And the DPI leadership on there were deputy superintendents and directors. We also had representatives from the State Board Office, Freebird McKenney and Tom Zico, and we had local superintendents, as well as representation from the governor's office, and we had Catherine Joyce, who represents the School Administrators Association. This work has gone through extensive feedback loops, so this is not just DPI coming up with a list, this has been in the process for weeks. And this document, the DPI proposal, this is the document from the working group. I will give some highlights of things that we are excited to present, and I apologize, I don't know, the order will go in, we might just go down the list of which person from DPI is going to speak to which, but I will give you some highlights. You'll see in section one that we are focused on preparing to make remote learning better, if it is an option we must use, and we know remote learning will be an option if we have to go to Plan B or Plan C. I can tell you as a parent myself of a seven-year-old who just finished first grade, her teachers were amazing, the amount of effort that went into remote learning, but we know that it was no replacement for being in the classroom, and it was a stress to parents, students, and educators. So you'll see that a lot of funds are focused on feedback from the field of the idea of buying prepackaged materials that we could distribute to teachers in a manner of equity, so that they could use that and not have to package their own curriculum and worksheets and videos, and they could focus on what was the most successful part about remote learning, and that was actually connecting with students. I can tell you again, from my own personal perspective, that my daughter, her favorite part of remote learning is when she would actually get to see her classmates and her teachers, even though they weren't face-to-face, they still could communicate, but her teacher also had to spend all this time putting together the digital workbooks and the video lessons. If we can take some of that burden off of the teachers, that would help free up time for more of that personal connection that we know is important for the whole child as well. You'll see that we have Digital Curriculum for Spring and Beyond, that is a project that got a lot of good feedback, that would actually be curriculum by North Carolina teachers for North Carolina teachers. And part of the inspiration for this is we've seen a lot of schools in remote learning, their professional learning teams at the school would divide up the work and make videos themselves that would explain the lesson. This was being done school by school by school. If we could create a database where we take Regional Teacher of the Year or Teacher of the Year from every county, and they go on and do lessons for each part of each subject, and that is provided to teachers, so it's a resource they can use if they want, again, that's all about if we have to go to remote learning, helping teachers spend more time focused on the relationship with the students. And then you'll see further down for two, we want to make sure we use equity to get these, this instruction to students. I want to highlight, because we're going to be talking about the changes that were made in this document to create the second document you have, I want to highlight number five. Number five got a lot of positive feedback from a local superintendent, and this is acknowledging that this money is federal disaster relief funding, and it is meant to be sent out in a way that supports children and families, and we need to use equity when we do this. We know that if we have to use Plan B or Plan C, we are going to face an extraordinary challenge with parents who rely on their children being in school to go to work. That includes teachers who might have young students, but they go teach at another school, or their student won't be able to go to school on every, every day. That also includes our, our first responders. So number five is giving that grant money to local school districts to help pay for that childcare, those opportunities for starting with hopefully teachers, and hopefully being able to do that for as many people as possible. And then there are some other, other topics that we can get to, but I think those are two very important large items that I wanted to highlight for you. And now I will turn it over to DPI staff, and I, I believe you all can go in whatever order you feel is best, but I know possibly we can probably just go down the line and explain each item, and if you feel you don't need to add anything to what I just said, no need to. So I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. This is Vanessa Rinn, Director of Digital Teaching and Learning. And Superintendent Johnson, you did do a good job with the first three line items, but I'll go into just a little more detail. Line item number one is to provide funding to each PSU to purchase a one-year subscription to standards-aligned content. We know that we need a clear curriculum that's aligned to standards, that has professional learning for strong implementation, where teachers are not having to recreate and work it over to match standards. And we want teachers to focus on the art of teaching. So line one and two go hand in hand. Line one provides funding for PSU's to purchase existing digital content. Line two provides funding for us to partner with our PSU's to develop full curriculum across all grade levels and subject areas, and that would give us some sustainability. I will move on to, when I said line two, that was line 1A and line 1B. If you look at line 2A, this is a funding request to... If you look at line 2A, this is a funding request to standardize the learning management system across the state, and this would pay for this contract for all PSU's this upcoming year. This would ensure that we have statewide standardization and the platform that students, parents, and teachers will be using, and will also give us a platform as we develop content in partnership with our PSU's that will be on one standardized platform. So that's a brief overview for line items 1A, 1B, and 2A. And I will turn over line 2B to Dr. Michael Nicolaidis.
Thank you Vanessa. This is Michael Nicolaidis, I'm the CIO at DPI. Line 2B is for us to test three different new and emerging technologies that will help us reach out to remote parts of the state in order to close the homework gap. And basically, none of this money is going to Friday Institute, it's going to these vendors or these new technologies, and we will work with the Friday Institute to test these three different concepts. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could make a request, there are a number of the items where it's, you know, they're the same, are essentially the same suggestions. It strikes me Superintendent that your biggest desire to highlight items that may be different, so if we could go down the list and focus on where items are different, which are the points I know you want to make, I think that'd be a more efficient best use of our time, and I would make that request if we could, please.
I'm happy to do that. I think we were prepared to present this entire sheet to you all, because this was the work product of the workgroup that was put together. And honestly, I'd like to continue, because staff has prepared for this, they are ready to present, it won't take much longer, but this is a significant issue, it's $40 million, and I think the State Board needs to understand what they're voting on.
All right, thank you.
I think next we'll go to number three. I don't know if that's David or Angie, but this has been an overwhelming success, the UNCTV partnership, and I'll let David or Angie speak to that.
Thank you Superintendent Johnson. Yes, I completely agree. We have been so fortunate to have this partnership with UNCTV for their At-Home Learning Initiative. The Friday Institute was a partner with this to conduct an evaluation of it, and their reports, their reports have conveyed how this has impacted the state in various areas. So we want to continue that as an option. You will see there that it says UNCTV/Other Partnerships, and the reason for that is because we have requested, or there's a House Bill 1190 that has requested funding for this. Should that House Bill not get passed for funding, we wanted to be able to support this initiative going forward. Should that House Bill get passed and the funding is provided for that, then we would continue to use this funding here to support this initiative, or to just expand it to a greater degree, really focusing on avenues of equity and non-digital instructional support. So that is line three, and then line, I'm sorry, line 3A. Line 3B, when this began in March, we discussed, it is curated, let me back up a little bit, it's curated content that is broadcast through the North Carolina Channel, and content spans up through Grade 12. Because that content is curated, it is not North Carolina-based content in the sense that it is North Carolina teachers providing it. And so our initial plan was to expand that so that we would be able to have teachers to provide some of those lessons at a minimum, which would be in the form of video-recorded lessons, really spinning off of Mariah Morris's initiative with her YouTube lessons that she has spearheaded during COVID. Same concept, but providing those broadcasts through the North Carolina Channel as well. And so to do that requires some equipment and also to pay those teachers stipends for their time in creating those lessons, and so that is the reason for line 3B.
And this is Vanessa Rinn again. Line 4A is funding for NCDPI to collaborate with the Friday Institute to continue to provide professional development around remote instruction and blended learning. I believe NCVPS is next.
And I'm not sure if Liz is on the call today. If she is, I'll pause for a second. If not, I can speak to that. Okay, I'll go ahead and speak to that. So we, this, this is really going to continue to expand that professional development that NCVPS provided over the last few months. As you know, they tapped into Teachers of the Year, to just various experts across the field to provide support to K-12 teachers through their virtual and remote teaching efforts, and so this would allow us to continue that. We know our teachers are hungry for professional development, our teachers and our leaders are really hungry for professional development and just learning how to refine their craft of remote instruction. So that is line 4B. I believe that takes us to which five, which Superintendent Johnson touched on. Do we want to go to line six with Dave Machado for charters?
Yes, thank you. This is Dave Machado, the Director of Officer Charter School. A lot of our charter schools that did not receive this initial money still had tremendous amount of COVID-related expenses that were not in their original budget. I've heard from many leaders talking about how difficult it was to transition to the expenses that they had to take out of their regular operating budget. Many, or almost all of these schools had to buy devices for the students that could not afford the devices, they had to buy some devices for teachers, they had to provide hotspots for families, and believe it or not, there were some teachers that didn't have internet access. All the schools had to do a very deep cleaning, so their families would be comfortable if they had to return to the buildings, had to buy PPE equipment. So that is an example of some of the expenses that they incurred that they would not have normally incurred. And also, there was loss of revenue. Many of our schools have, provide summer camps for their kids, and that is a way to provide a service for their students and generate income that can go into operating revenue for operating expenses. So not only were there additional expenses that our schools faced, they also had a great loss of revenue. Thank you.
This is David Stigall. I'll hit the last one, number seven, age-appropriate materials for DHHS signage. This request is a direct response to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services requirement for signage in all areas. The Student Health, Safety, and Comms Team worked with graphics to develop a portfolio of posters and signs for school use. There are seven different posters and signs, both in English and Spanish, versions that are age-appropriate for elementary and for secondary. These funds would support the printing of the posters and signs for all PSU's in North Carolina, as well as the shipping cost, and make sure everyone had equitable access. Doing it in bulk obviously drives down the cost, so doing them all at one time is a much large cost savings. And districts would then, once they get their posters and signs, should they want to do more, they will have access to the files to continue printing additional posters and signs as needed throughout the year.
And then, of course, at the bottom, you'll see that as required by law, we have held back the technical parts for administration and auditing to make sure that we handle that up. Sorry, Ms. Townsend, did you want to say something to that? I'm sorry.
No, I think you're perfectly on target with that, and so we definitely will need to make sure that we follow all federal guidelines to ensure that we do monitor these funds. And so we would have someone in place that looks at the programmatic aspect of the grant, and then we'd have fiscal monitoring and fiscal audit on staff to be able to ensure that these monies are being spent appropriately. And then the last portion that's there is the external evaluator, and so at the end of the day, we want to say, we want to be able to say what impact these funds had on North Carolina. We'd like to know how those funds were used overall, and then now what was the impact of those funds on students and teachers within North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is DPI's proposal. That was, this is the proposal that was drafted with input from the State Board Office, from DPI, from local superintendents and other stakeholders, and went through the feedback loops that we created. Are there any questions, are there any questions on the DPI proposal that we can answer?
Vice Chair Duncan, and Superintendent Johnson, this is Olivia.
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I've learned quite a bit from this presentation and taken a lot of notes, and it just exemplifies good thinking all the way around and forward thinking. My question is this, with regard to assuming that, well, let's, let's think about a world of school education around Plan A. Would the professional development, improving remote learning, improving teacher techniques, and all that's around the, being the best we can be in the world of remote teaching and learning, would that professional development take place regardless, let's say we're back in schools as close to normal as possible? Would we move forward with that PD?
Yes, because heaven forbid we got another spike any time in the next year, we would need to be prepared for remote learning, and we hope that is not what happens, but we know that there is the risk that we'll get even more of a spike than we're having now in the fall. And also, regardless of plan, and I hope we're in Plan A, I hope we get as many students and teachers back into schools as possible, we know that we have at-risk teachers, and we have also students who are in that risk category, and they are going to still need alternative settings for education, and we definitely need to make sure that equity is a focus, and if a student is someone who is at a high risk of COVID-19, of complications, we do not want them to have any less educational opportunities because they cannot go into the physical school building.
Absolutely. Well, prudence would say that, would definitely move us in that direction. Therefore, professional development next year in our schools, if we're in a world of hopefully Plan A, all of professional development would, I would say at least more than 50, 60, 75% would be around the world of remote distance learning. Is that correct?
I don't know a percentage. I don't know if I can put a percentage to it, but yes, definitely, we have committed to educators and parents and students across the state that our huge goal will be that we have improved remote learning, if, heaven forbid, we have to go back to that.
And even regardless, it's a wise investment in our money. I, and I certainly don't want to, I don't want my tone to suggest I'm being judgmental because I'm fully in favor of this. So you've answered my questions. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions?
Mr. Duncan, Jay Bate.
Yes, Ms. Buckner.
Got one question and one comment. On the question, I just want to go to the Community Learning Lab partners and just ask a few questions here. I'm trying to understand, one, I'd like just some backup on the 15 million number, how we get to that. And then, second, how does this relate with DHHS funding, largely federal funding for childcare, community block grants, TANF money for childcare, that already flow through county commissions and local communities for this very purpose? And given what we know about the co-mingling of funds for pre-K, which takes a significant amount of work to allot and articulate, some more detail on how this would work and how we would not be spending money that's already available through other federal sources would be helpful for me.
I guess the counter question would be, do you feel there's enough money to handle this situation if we go to remote learning?
Well, that's not my question. My question is what money is available, and is it, you're considered judgment that it's not enough, and so what does 15 million represent?
15 million is our effort to help working families with a situation we know could be something that will not have enough money to handle. And the DHHS childcare subsidy, it's for school-aged children, usually before and after school, I believe.
What is the amount of that money? And again, what does 15 million provide? I mean, is that an amount per child? Does that go to any community, no matter its wealth? I'm just looking for some detail.
We can work with you on how the grant application would be established, but again, this is all in the mind of equity. We just want to highlight having as much as we can go to help working families, especially families of teachers. Possibly, we could have someone from DPI talk in more specificity, but I do believe that this is going to be a grant situation where we would then allot it to the districts.
Okay, appreciate the feedback. Ms. Chairman, I just would appreciate, mostly make sure we're not putting close to 33% of the money into funding that we may have federal funding to accomplish. And second, I'd just like to know what it pays for, what the 15 million is based on. The second is just a comment, and this follows up on our discussion with the ISD yesterday about locally-created curriculum. And that is, I am very excited to see the 8.8 million, I know there's a little bit more in what the BizOP Committee is suggesting for packaged curriculum. I think that's a move in the right direction, whether we were in COVID-19 crisis or not, just the opportunity for districts to use high-quality-aligned curriculum that we know keeps kids on grade level. I'm more concerned about putting almost an equivalent amount, 7 million, into locally-developed curriculum, which I think is moving against the grain of what folks are doing across the country right now in ensuring high-quality curriculum and not locally-developed curriculum that may or may not meet those standards. And then, second, it doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem to have urgency behind it, because that's going to be a process, and this is not going to be available to districts for some time. So I'm not opposed to locally-developed curriculum that gets shared, I just think this money is for immediate relief, given what the superintendent's been saying about the likelihood of some level of remote learning. And so the more we can get out sooner, especially through what we know to be high-quality, and I assume we would do this aligned to something like Ed Reports or that does an assessment of what high-quality curriculum packages look like. I just, I would suggest to the board that that 7 million would be better used from an equity standpoint and from a curriculum and support standpoint in some other venues.
And I do not believe it would be local curriculum. This would be efforts from DPI level, working with local districts.
Are there any questions on the superintendent's proposal?
DPI's proposal, Mr. Duncan. DPI and the workgroup.
Very good, I'm sorry, DPI's proposal.
Now, do you have a question?
Please, Ms. Hammond.
I would like to go back to item number five and follow up.
I would like to go back to item number five and follow up on Mr. Buckston's questions. Superintendent Johnson, just to help me understand this, so I would imagine that that money would be pay existing daycare and childcare providers for the costs of the students attending there when they are not in a face-to-face situation. Is that correct? So that money would go to the districts, but then would end up paying for a variety of different childcare setting?
Possibly. The other option would be through the grant funding, if local districts can partner with nonprofit organizations to possibly create other opportunities. But yes, I don't want it to seem like it's just, it's going to be childcare centers that already exist. This would be through grant funding that could possibly even set up new opportunities with nonprofit partners to make sure that students have a place to be supervised during the day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the DPI proposal or comments? All right, thank you. So let me review, if I could, the proposal that the committee offers.
What, Mr. Duncan, what committee are we, just for clarity, what committee are we talking about?
BizOP Committee directly asked Dr. Townsend-Smith to take all the information that had been received from all sources and provide a report for us to review as a board. And that's what I'm about to talk about. So let me take a step back, if I could, as I started.
But they're not, just, I'm just, I just want, just for clarity, I'm trying to look at the two sides.
Superintendent, I did not interrupt you, your presentation at all. Could I please have the courtesy of being able to review our position, and then if you want to say something, that's fine.
So this is the BizOP Committee's position? It's not, it's not everything. You've cut stuff out.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I'm going to move forward. Appreciate it. To provide some context back, if we could, I think all of us know and acknowledge that the needs here are dramatically more than the available amount of the 10% that exists. There are significant needs in a number of different, very important areas. Requests came from people within the department, people outside the department, superintendents and others. We know from our own work on our strategic plan that there are equity needs that have become very much exacerbated by this situation. And we have Leandro compliance issues that have also, there's been a great deal of commentary about how much this has so badly affected students who are in the most vulnerable of categories. And so we have tried to take a look at the entirety of the needs, realizing that the resources available don't come close to meeting them all. So the work that's been done by the department is very, very good, and it's excellent work. Really appreciate all the work that's been done by the department on this, and it's contributed very much to the work that we've done here. But ultimately, there are some priorities and choices that one must make on very limited resources, and that's what we sought to do within the spirit of the board's strategic plan, the board's Leandro obligation, and an assessment of how we can best move forward. So you'll see many, many things in common, and I think that speaks well of the work that's been done. I'm going to try to highlight some of the areas where there are some differences and move through as quickly as I can. In the very first item, which is resource development for digital curricula, you'll see that we're in agreement. We believe that the 8.8 million is an excellent start, but the resources needed there for high-quality, standards-aligned, digital curriculum packages of top-notch quality. We believe that a number 10,800,000 is a number that will work to put us in a better position to be situated, to get something that, as Superintendent Buckston presented on behalf of the department, stated is really an important priority for the people out in the field right now. It's of the highest priority for so many of our school leaders. We did not believe that the digital curriculum spring 2020 and beyond is as high a priority as the DPI has it, and among other reasons, that there is in fact a grant application out, and it might very well be that this very worthy work will be supported by the grant. But as we looked at the priorities and tried to work through the priorities from the lens that we're looking at, it's not something that brought the same kind of value as some of the other items that we have are proposing. We do have in common the learning management platform standardization in the same amount. We do have in common the long-term connectivity. We actually have $250,000 support of that. Neither 200 nor 250 will be fully sufficient, but they will make an important inroads for some of our districts that are in the greatest need for greater support with respect to connectivity. We're in alignment with UNCTV requests, and video lessons we also support. We believe that that can be accomplished at a different number than the department, and that's a, again, good fake disagreement, and it's not even one of substance. It's a disagreement that we all agree that it's important, just a matter of how much we can devote to putting those together at this time. And we also would note that Freeburg McKinnney, who contributes greatly with respect to the State Board, also has been very involved with the UNCTV pilot project, and has been, as well as many people from the department. And I just want to appreciate all of them for the work they've done to help make this an important part of the work that's been done. And it's a good time to stop and pause and thank UNCTV for their willingness to be such good partners in this effort. With respect to digital teaching and learning support for the Friday Institute Task Order, we are in alignment with the DPI proposal. On professional development, you'll note the proposal from the department was $200,000. It's a staff's view, and honestly, this number is not as high as we would love for it to be either, but we have set aside $322,941 for that for a series of professional development opportunities focused on digital and remote learning. And again, that's another area where resources limit. You would love to have additional amount for professional development in that regard for K through 12 school leaders. And we also have $325,000 for, also for professional development. That one's actually the one for the four-week facilitated course, and the $322,000 is for the, is more leader-specific, if you will, training and supporting teachers when you're in the remote instruction environment. We also, with respect to the Community Learning Lab Partners, 15 million dollars. We would note a few things. One, we've of course had 21st Century Grants for several years to help these kinds of supports. There's other grants that have been provided and are being provided both through DHHS and hopeful to receive some further grants or support, financial support in what the legislature is providing that we believe will further support that effort. And we do include an amount for that. If you look further down, there's a $4,471,000 item that's focused on that effort to assist. But there are a couple of things that we felt were extremely important that needed to get in as part of the board's focus, this grant. And the first one involves EC instructional support. The board will recall that in the first request for coronavirus funds, we requested 17 and a half million dollars from the legislature, and we're very fortunate and we're thankful for, in fact, we got 15 million. That was focused on the efforts during the summer and for extended learning and for future learning, given where the circumstances of so many of our EC children have been. We asked then for $32 million after having done, the department did an extensive survey of all the districts to try to get a number for what it would cost in terms of future services once the next school year started. And in terms of federal dollars, there are some federal dollars available, but there are not enough federal dollars available, and there were some state dollars available. And the legislature did give $5 million more in response to that request. And again, we're thankful for that because it's needed, but in recognizing the situation for our EC children, we do need more. We're going to be very significantly short. And so we believe $10 million needs to be addressed for the future services needs of our students who have been very adversely impacted. And when we look at through the eyes of equity, this is a very important use of a limited resource, but we think it's an extraordinarily necessary use. With respect to charters, we again reflect the number that's been reflected by the department. Another area of equity, and I refer to this in my opening thoughts, our Leandro students have been very, very adversely impacted because of connectivity issues, among other things, and having, even those who are fortunate enough to get remote learning, that's a difficult, difficult bit of work for both our educators and for these students who we so much want to succeed and have had, in some instances, in the younger grades, have had several interruptions to their educational process. So we think it's important to add to the district and regional support 12 instructional coaches that will provide support regionally on the 64 most impacted or low-performing schools in our state. And we think it's very important to get these resources directly applied to those students and that leadership applied to those students in a way that we can make a difference. And so we have $4,528,000 that has been assessed and aligned to that very important need. The PPE posters is the same, our administration numbers are the same, except for $100,000, which involved a request for a program supporter, support person, which is listed as $100,000 for a two-year period. So that would be, in that instance, would be, that would include salary and benefits, which will be, I think, perhaps difficult to get that within that type of budget in any event. But our focus is on, our focus has been, and I think the department has joined in this, and I think that's a good thing, that we would say internal audit and fiscal monitors are extremely important for this work, and having program administrators to lend support to the work that Dr. Townsend is doing, and to have internal audit department strengthened for this work is extremely important. And so I think we're, for the most part, aligned throughout that process. You'll note that the totals are different. The total of the department's number is $39,266, and total for the board's proposal is $37,649,000. If you look at the 10%, I think the department's number is right at about 10%. The half percent for the use of personnel to administer the exam, in this case, is like $1.9 million. It's very close to $2 million. And in both of our plans, I think both wisely do not try to consume the full half percent, but on the other hand, try to assure accountability and reportability in terms of the work that's being done, and that's the effort that I see reflected in both plans. There will be additional expenses in order to do this. There will be, for example, if nothing else, there'll be travel expenses to support the work that's being done in order to go audit. There'll be substantial travel expenses around the state and other issues. And so there needs to be some additional money that we all need to realize will become an indirect cost as opposed to a direct cost. If, as it sits now, I think the CPI plan might have to be tapered back a little bit to the nine and a half percent number, but I feel sure that can be easily done. But I say that, and I use the word easily, from a mathematical standpoint, it can be easily done. From the need of resources around our state, what we need is a significantly greater increase in the total amount of money that we have here. And we're dealing with limited resources. These are the best judgments that our staff's relying on, the great work of the department personnel, including the committee, which they served, as well as the input from all others around the state, and realizing the strategic plan of the board, the focus of the board and the Leandro obligations. This is our proposed approach, and glad to take any questions or comments on it.
Yes, I have questions. Just to confirm, so all throughout that, you said we, I mean, just for clarity, that's all this is, it's the BizOP Committee, you and Todd Chastain, that directed the changes to the DPI proposal that we see reflected in what we just went over?
No, we authorized, based on input we received during the course of that from our staff, we authorized our staff to take the information that had been provided by DPI, as well as all the information that they had gotten from DPI, as well as other sources, and to come back with a proposed plan that was in line with the board's equity focus, Leandro obligations, and the needs of the department as they were expressed. And there's a great deal of similarity that we can all see there, and there are some differences.
So the way these changes happened is one person on the board staff acknowledging that DPI did the feedback loops with the local superintendents and all the stakeholders, took, after the DPI proposal, that one person made these changes?
I think, you know, Mark, honestly, I'm not sure how productive this line of questioning is. I think we assigned during the committee meeting, and anyone who was there can verify this fact, we assigned that task, and that person worked with others on, as well as, I certainly am aware of the work that was done, and I appreciate the work was done, and I'm thankful for the work that was done, not just by our staff, but very thankful of the work that was done by the department staff, and some choices had to be made. And I think we are right to recognize that some priorities may be viewed differently by different folks, and that's what we're really talking about.
I agree. I was just trying to figure out who, I was just trying to figure out who made that call after the DPI group had vetted this with the directors and local districts. But you, I agree, there are many, many similarities, and there's something that I'm very interested in, because you know, one of my priorities is personalized learning. And when I look at number five of the BizOP Committee's proposal, $10 million to a standards-aligned diagnostic tool, which is adaptive with individualized learning pathways to promote growth for K-12 grade students. While I hate that we're taking that $10 million away from working families to help pay for childcare during remote learning, I am very interested to hear about what that standards-aligned diagnostic tool is for K-12, K through 12 grade students. So my question is on that number five, what is that tool that we're talking about here?
Yeah. Well, let me note specifically that that's under notes, and the description is to expand the support for professional, excuse me, to expand the support for exceptional children funding for future services. There is a hope that because of the circumstances that we're looking at and the belief that we can find some standards-aligned diagnostic tool that will be of assistance, but that is not what the entirety of the amount is intended to be spent on. It is something that we think is important to investigate and review, and I'm glad you and you are interested in doing that, because I think it's of value to try to get a good tool, if we can get one, that will provide assistance. A lot of, a lot of these that have to be done hands-on, it's the nature of the work.
To Mr. Buckston's questions that he had for me about specificity and urgency, I think we need a little more specificity if we're putting $10 million on the table for that. And urgency, I don't see how we would do an RFP to get a diagnostic tool in time to get that out to help anyone this school year. So I would like to hear a little more of the specificity of that $10 million, if someone can talk to that.
Yeah, I think the specificity would be if we're not able to, even if we're not able to get any form of a diagnostic tool that we can use from a personalized learning standpoint, that the needs are far greater than the 10 million that we've got to support the districts around the state. Their needs are just very significant, and we need to be able to provide that support from the department's end. So this is one where, as is true about many categories, where the resources are far, far short. I don't have specificity on a diagnostic tool at this point, and so, but it's certainly something that I think we should look at, and we support looking at, as is indicated by the notes, but it's not in the description. Please note that it's in the notes.
So what, how would we send out that $10 million? So, what, how would we send out that $10 million?
I, I think we work through the department. The department has a sense of where the needs are and how the department gets the supports to where the needs are. And I think the department, and the department is following pretty closely based on the fact that they were able to do a survey of all the districts in terms of what the needs are, to find ways to provide that support, and it's important that we work on doing that.
Okay, so would it, so we would send out the $10 million as an allotment? It would not be for a standards-aligned diagnostic tool, which it says in the notes?
It wouldn't necessarily be an allotment either. I think what we need to do is to make sure we, we don't know exactly what the full funds would be. We know we're way short on EC funds. We will apply the funds so that they have the best and highest use, once we know the entirety of the funds that may be available. And we don't know that right now, and you, for your department planning purposes, don't know that right now. What we do know is we're terribly short on our EC kit, and we have a real commitment to those children across the state, and I know you agree with that. And so, that's, that's our commitment, that we can make the very, very, very productive use of this to support our children.
Yeah, absolutely. We just don't know exactly for what. Number seven, I also love number seven. I sat around the table two years ago with Dr. Maria Peche Martin, and together we came up, in the, in the face of budget cuts, with the District and Regional Support Division. And my hats off to Dr. Peche Martin and Dr. Emery for coming in and helping to build it and then take over as the Deputy Superintendent for District and Regional Support. And Dr. Martin, thank you for your leadership, it is doing amazing things, and I am just so proud of the work that DPI has done to truly become customer service focused. I will tell you, I would love to hire more people into the District and Regional Support Division, but I will say that I am very wary of using federal disaster relief funds to hire 12 people to come into DPI, when, as we have been saying, the needs are so urgent and so great that we've got to get this money out to districts. So, that looks like money was chopped away from something else that was supported by the task force in order to put in 12 more people that would work at DPI.
I would ask you to look, I would ask you to look at it as supports in the field for our most impacted students throughout the state, and the focus is to try to serve those students, and I would ask you to look at it in that way, and I know you, I know you do, so, that's, that's the way.
How long?
That's the way to look through the lines.
When you pay for salary and benefits to 12 people, how long does that money last? How many, how many, is that a year?
I believe it's intended to last through two years.
Two years?
Yeah. And it's more than, the, the hope would be it's more than 12 people to provide support right in the, in the schools themselves, and those, those people would be providing services in, in the schools themselves as well. I, I am glad you're excited about it, because that will help the planning of the process go well.
I am, and I think the money, I think the money should be used for urgent federal disaster relief, and that's, that's what this money is. So, those are, those are my concerns. The State Board has before them two plans, one from the field and DPI, that's been weeks in the process, and the BizOP Committee's plan. I think I've asked my questions and raised my concerns.
Yeah, and one, one thing, just to give you some further clarification on that funding, it should be 30 positions in total, not 12. The attachment, the attachment may have gotten cut off, I'm not sure, I think it did.
30?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Okay, well, we, we might need to get to the bottom of that before the board votes on hiring 30 more people for DPI and, and see how, if that 4.5 million actually helps that, and for how long?
I think Mr. Buxton wanted to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the turnaround one.
Please.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Since I've been on the board, we've been talking about how to create more robust assistance for these, for our, our low-performing schools, and I, I think we may be at a time of highest urgency in terms of our department's ability to assist schools as they're facing an unprecedented emergency, and whether it's the development of remote learning plans, whether it's the identification of students who, who may be the greatest victims of the COVID slide, whether it's what they're doing with early literacy or high school proficiency and readiness for college, we, we probably are at our apex of need for our districts, especially our smaller capacity districts, to have the kind of support they need to make progress. And I would also note that the state and the plaintiffs have committed in this school year to fully fund and support the regional support and school turnaround work. And with the legislature going home, I'm concerned that that means we're going to have to go ahead and reclassify existing positions and move personnel and resources into that to be in compliance, and appropriately so, with what we have as a state and supported by the plaintiffs, told the judge that we are going to do as a first action step in our plan against the, those seven elements. So, I see this as fully consistent with the emergency we're in, high value for the department to provide supports and services that go well beyond what $4 million spread across 115 school districts would provide, which would be pennies on the dollar in school districts across all of those, and be in compliance with what we as a state are trying to do in a 25-year-old school finance case. So, I, I see this one as a high priority. In the EC one, my understanding was we were, we were providing the additional services, future services, online and offline, based on the needs that districts were identifying, given the low level of service they've been able to provide, assumedly, I stand, correct me if that's wrong, as students have been out of school over this time. If, if that's not right, and we're talking about a purely diagnostic tool, then maybe we, we need a little bit more investigation, but my thought was this was going to help buttress an inadequate amount of funding to date that we received to deal with EC services. So, we need to look further into that one, that might be a good idea.
No, that's, that's correct. That is the focus, is to, is to deal with that issue. If there's inefficiency, it can be created with a diagnostic tool for some of those students, then we're interested in that, and Superintendent says that he is as well. Let me ask you, do the other board members have questions or thoughts?
Vice Chair Duncan, this is Olivia. I have a couple of questions about the, the position, the additional positions. First, it was 12, and now it's 30. My question is this, I do concur with everything that has been discussed around the needs for EC services. I would, if we're going to, whether it's 12 employees or 30, or somewhere in the middle, I would hope that those, those dollars would be specifically for EC support in our districts of, of, all of them are of greatest need. But I would like to have that specified, it needs to be specified, this di, the diagnostic tool language is confusing.
Dr. Oxenden, the 30 employees were for the low-performing schools, not for the EC, so.
Okay.
And I'm sorry if I'm part of the diagnostic part, note, not in the description, I'll say again, but I certainly think we can clarify that.
Yes.
The, the needs are, I mean, based on the board's identification, the needs were woefully short in terms of where we are from a funding standpoint right now, and that's, that's the focus and the intent is to serve all of our EC students around the state and, and in the way that's the, the best possible and most efficient way we can do it, but best for the students.
Right, because diagnostic tool, to me, implies that we have something in mind that is ready for the procurement process. I don't think, it seems like that's not the case.
Well, the department may well have something in mind for that, but I, I'm not suggesting that I know what it is.
No, no, well, Mr. Duncan, that was, that did not come from the department here. That did not come from the department.
Yeah, as I said, to be clear, I did not suggest it was. I said they could have something in mind, I do not know. All right.
I'll, I'll do, I'll do, I'll do a quick, I'll just do a quick summary, I think.
Could you wait for a minute?
Sure, sure, I'll wait, I'll wait till our questions have been asked.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Oxenden, did you have your second question?
Actually, I don't. I think my first one and second one have been answered.
Okay, very good. Any other, Superintendent, any other board members have any questions or comments? All right, not hearing any. Superintendent, please go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on this. I, I obviously have serious concerns. I think this second document was done without DPI input, and this is what happens when the State Board and DPI aren't working together, and it's unfortunate. You do have in front of you the DPI proposal, which was the collaboration of the State Board Office and DPI, and local superintendents, and other stakeholders giving their feedback. I'm very concerned about the $10 million for EC, while of course, we could always put $10 million towards EC. I don't think we really have any idea what that money is for, or how it's going to go out. And now, I'm concerned if the $4 million is even enough to hire 30 people, and how long that will be, but now, it, it also is kind of concerning that it sounds like we're using federal disaster relief funds to fill in on promises that were made in a Leandro action plan that I don't even know if it was publicly discussed or voted on by the State Board of Education. I know that's a case that's been going on, and it has been submitted, but, you know, that, this is urgent need now, I understand. Leandro is a huge priority, obviously, and that's something we should work with the General Assembly on, but I would just implore the State Board of Education, go with the DPI plan that's been vetted by local superintendents and outside stakeholders, and make sure that that $10 million goes to working families and families of teachers, because as much as the board has tried to say during this conversation, that there might be enough money for childcare if we go to remote learning, I don't think anyone actually believes that. So, that is our attempt to try to help, which, what we know is going to be a huge issue, and even if only scratches the surface, it's, it's better than nothing, because we can help our teachers. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And to be clear on that, we know to a certainty, there's not nearly enough money for our EC needs, which is why it's in there. And we think it's very important to have that in there, and that, that information does ultimately come from staff. So, and, and I, I would also say, there is four and a half million dollars included in the plan for the support of families, it's just not the $15 million that was suggested on behalf of the department's proposal. So, again, I, I go back to where we started, there are huge needs here, and there's got to be a selection of priorities, and the selection of priorities from the lens of the board has to be geared, to some degree, through the immediate crisis, the equity lens, Leandro needs, and how we can best serve our children. And that has been the focus point, considerations, and I hope that the board members have considered that as to be the focus of the comments on any of the differences that exist. I thank everyone for your concern, for your participation in this, and so, that will be an item on for action today. Our next item is BizOP 3, which is the Session Law COVID-19 Recovery Act, and I believe these are the, almost the end of our allotment. There's, there's still an allotment on cybersecurity to come, and we expect that no later than August and perhaps late July. I believe John Kiefer is here to talk about the two allotments we've got before us today for approval.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Well, maybe good afternoon now, John.
Yeah, good afternoon, yeah, I was, I was not watching the clock. Yes, good afternoon. So, today's school business is providing for consideration, as you said, two updates to the State allotment policy manual for new coronavirus relief fund allotments as authorized by Session Law 2020-4, part of the state's comprehensive response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The first policy for consideration is for non-digital resources. This will utilize Program Report Code 123. These allotments will be used to provide non-digital remote instruction resources to students with limited connectivity in order to continue learning growth during any school closures related to COVID-19. The second policy that's presented today is for the Extended Learning and Integrated Student Support Grant, or Ellis Grant Program, which will utilize Program Report Code 133. These are competitive grants that will be administered by our Federal Program Monitoring Support Division. It'll fund new or existing programs for high-quality extended learning and integrated or student support service programs for at-risk students whose learning has been negatively affected by COVID-19. We do have today on the line as well, Dr. Angie Melanek, who is available to discuss and answer any questions related to the non-digital resources policy, and Dr. Tricia Townsend, who is available to answer any questions related to the Ellis Grant policy.
Right, thank you, John. Good morning, or I guess it is, good afternoon also. The $3 million for non-digital resources would allow us to divide that up by ADM. It's not a lot, we understand that, but I believe LAAs would agree that any little bit would be beneficial, and that will basically just be for print materials. We know that during the March to June timeframe, the school districts were printing out a lot of packets and mailing those out, and so, that is really to help offset those sort of costs. And that is all regarding that amount.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will talk with you about the Extended Learning and Integrated Support Grant, also known as Ellis. This program provides opportunities for students to receive academic supports during and after school. You are familiar with this program. It is a past program that was known as PRC 40. In that iteration, it was a state-funded program. A new allotment policy was needed because the underlying source of the funds has shifted to a federal source. There's also an imperative that these funds be used to support the gaps that students may have due to the loss of instruction during this COVID-19 pandemic. Other stipulations of the grant remain the same. There is a requirement that nonprofit corporations work in partnership with PSUs. It is a reimbursement-based grant, the entity makes expenditures and then files for reimbursement. And another point is that the entities cannot solely fund their program with these funds, they are required to have a three-to-one match in this particular grant. The awards may not exceed $500,000, and the funds must be spent by December 30th, 2020.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments on, on these two items, these two allotments? All right, thank you very much for those concise presentations. We now go to BizOP 6, which is a new proposed policy on superintendent's communications and reporting obligations. This is out for discussion, it's, we welcome comments and thoughts, and we'll welcome them from, from the department and from our members through the course of the next month, and have it up for action in August. Are there any questions or comments about it today? All right, not hearing any, that takes us into the executed contracts report and the planned contracts report. I have not heard any questions from anyone on this one this month, which is a little unusual. Usually, there's one or two questions somewhere, but I have not heard any. Does anyone have questions on any of the contracts under any of these two items today? I believe, I think it done would still be with us to answer those if you have them. All right, not hearing any. Our next item in BizOP is the Agency Vacancy Report, and I think Ron Paxton is here to make the presentations to follow. And I think Ron Paxton is here to make the presentation as a follow-up to a board request. Ron, are you with us, Mr. Paxton?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Welcome and look forward to your presentation.
Oh, thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time. We put together some information around utilization of temporary employees through Temporary Solutions, which is our third-party provider for temporary staffing. So if we go to slide two in the presentation, you can see that we currently have 72 temporary employees that are active with Temporary Solutions. And this slide two does not include the residential schools or NCCAT utilization, but simply DPI proper in Raleigh. Of those payments, to Temporary Solutions, 61% come from state appropriated dollars. And we have an average number of vacancies of 98 over the past eight months. And we've identified that there are nine of those temps working specifically and directly for a one-on-one vacancy. We spent 4.9 million total with temp solutions. That's for all positions. If we were to just do the DPI proper in Raleigh, that'd be 3.67 million. So the, the slides in between, and I'm going to direct our attention to the very last slide, but the slides in between give you some, some numbers and some support to the numbers around our temporary utilization and the funding for those. So on the last slide, what we looked at was taking a snapshot of where we were with our vacancies, where we were with temp utilization, and again, talking, going back to those nine that were direct placements so that we can, we, we can get a feeling and understanding of where we were with that. And this is, this is something that we're working on to develop a more comprehensive process of tracking and reporting not only temporary staffing, but total staffing across the agency. And the, the questions brought forward were good questions and we've got some work to do to make sure that we collect data from where we are across the agency and, and report those in a robust manner. So again, I, I thank everyone for their time and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Are there questions for Mr. All right, let me ask one if I could. On the last slide that's still up, deputy superintendent of innovation has 32 temp solution employees. Can you describe for us what their, what their job functions are?
We are, we're working on a breakdown of that, but I know that with that particular group, we've got a significant number of those that are the English language arts consultants in the field.
Okay. Is it saying true on the deputy superintendent district support, are those also out in the field, I'm assuming?
Those are, you know, our initial look at that is they're spread out much more. There's not really a big concentration that we've found yet.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a good, going back to, we've got some more work to do to really make sure we understand for each of these areas how we're utilizing those.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm A, this is David Stigall.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I think you were speaking to the 32 is under temps, I think is what that is listed. Vacancies are 16 and I know, I know Ron said ELA, but I believe it's, it's a K3 literacy, not, not necessarily ELA, but we have five, I believe, in that division. And I, we can certainly confirm, but the 32, I just want to clarify, the 32 is temps. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct.
Yes, okay. Just want to make sure to clarify, we don't have, we don't have 32 vacancies.
No, no, it was temps.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I thought it was temps. I was just asking what were their functions, what were their job functions at temps? Well, I gather what there are people that are working out in the field.
Right, yes, sir. Thank you.
Maybe the way to ask you, is there any intent for them to become, for those positions to become permanent positions?
And I would say that's, you know, as we go through and understand more about how we're utilizing temps, those, those would be discussions that I think we should have around how, how do those work?
Now, I, I think the board will probably welcome those discussions once you've got your arms around it. I think those would be helpful discussions for deeper understanding.
Agreed.
Yeah, so thank you in advance for your work to bring that back to us, as you reasonably can. All right, the last thing we have then is our monthly budget report. And any board members have any questions about the monthly budget report? As we are right at clear. All right, not hearing any. Mr. Chair, I believe that completes the report of the biz op committee. I did get a text from a member, a member about the timing of the voting on the 10% set aside in the CARES Act. If someone could remind me, I think there's a time deadline that's very short or very close. Can someone remind me what that is? Yanah, perhaps?
Yes, sir. So the submission date is Ju, July 11th, so we would need to, whichever option we go with, we will need to approve today.
We do, yeah, we do need to go ahead and make this decision. Thank you for confirming that. Again, thank you, Chairman Davis, for completing the work of the biz op committee for today.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. Let's take a break and reconvene at 12:45.